I'm gonna call this Tampa City Council meeting to order, and when you stand for a moment, say out in prayer, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you let the referee reflect that Councilman Louis Viera will be absent during this session? All right, roll call.
Suarez.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
Maniscalco.
Here.
Capin.
Present.
Miranda.
Here.
Viera. Reddick.
Here. All right, can we get a motion for approval of the agenda?
Move.
I got a motion from Mr. Miranda saying I can advise Mr. Maniscalco on favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, go to ceremony activities, item number one, presentation by historic preservation.
Good morning, Council, Shirley Foxknow, City Clerk. This morning, Council, we have your appointment for the Historic Preservation Commission. We have one applicant who's interested in the urban planner position. She is Dominique S. Cobb.
Good morning, Council.
Good morning.
All right, my name is Dominique Cobb. I am, you know, I am, I live here in Tampa. I also am a graduate of the Mayor's Neighborhood University. I'm also graduating this year at St. Pete College. My focus is to serve the community, basically. Also, I'll be planning to study abroad in May so that I can get a bit more experience in culture diversity and hopefully bring that back to my community. I reside in the East Tampa area, and my focus is preserving the historic sites here in Tampa, the ones that are forgotten, the ones that are diminishing before our eyes. So, I hope that I have a chance to serve this area and also Tampa.
Now, Ms. Cobb, are you getting a degree in urban planning from St. Pete College?
Yes.
Terrific, congratulations. And what part of Europe are you gonna go to to study about?
I'll be going to India, New Delhi, that whole area.
She said abroad.
Okay, terrific. I'm sorry, I thought she said Europe, I apologize. Now, that is historical, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you for applying. Chair, I'd like to move that we accept her application as the urban planner position on the Historic Preservation Commission.
I got a motion from Mr. Suarez, seconded by Mr. Miranda. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You got a resolution?
Just move the resolution. I'll move the resolution.
All right, Mr. Suarez, moving. What we gotta do with it? Oh, okay. I got a motion from Mr. Suarez to move the resolution, seconded by Mr. Miranda. All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we congratulate you and bring us something back from abroad. We take souvenirs every now and then.
They better get it here quick.
Yes, we're expiring next week.
All right, so, item number two.
First time I seen this man in a coat and, with a coat on. It is with great pleasure that I present this accommodation to Mr. Brunson on behalf of the Tampa City Council. We would like to congratulate you on over thirty years of dedicated service and contribution to the Tampa Bay community as a professional photographer. In 1988, the Florida Sentinel Bulletin newspaper gave you your first star when they hired you as a news slash event photographer. In 1992, you started Brunson Photography and have gone on to be one of the most recognizable respectful photographer in the Tampa Bay community. The Tampa City Council stands best wishes to you as you move forward with your commitment to touch lives and bring smiles to so many in our community that will make the city of Tampa a better place to live, work, and play. Always remember, if God helps, you can give freely and generously of your blessing that God has entrusted to you. Be blessed, congratulations. Thank you for all you have done in the city of Tampa, and you have taken plenty of my photos, but you, and every time I call and say, hey, send me a copy, I'm still waiting. And that's been eight years, and ain't got them yet, so, send me something.
I'm gonna send it to you.
All right, I appreciate it.
I wanna say thank you. Thank you, Council. Thanks for your eight years.
You got your family here, really?
Yes, I do.
Have them come up.
My beautiful wife.
Yeah, have them come up.
Youngest son, and my mother-in-law.
Yeah, y'all come up.
I got one son, he had a test this morning, so.
Oh, okay.
He would've been here.
Yeah, yeah, so, make sure you get on camera here, so y'all can look back this evening and see yourself on TV.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, whatever your comments you wanna make.
I just wanna thank the Council and Councilman Reddick for this award. I'm usually on that side of the podium, so it feels nice to be on this side of the podium. It just feels nice to receive this, thank you. Thank you, Council, for all your eight years of service and your next endeavor, and we'll be there for you as well. Thank you.
Congratulations.
I just wanna say, this is, in all my years of public service, Mr. Chairman, this is the first time ever that a photographer has been photographed on an occasion. It's usually the other way around, this is historical.
I love first, and I'm glad.
And by, like, Mr. Reddick, I had hair the first time you photographed me, and I'm still waiting on the picture. Only joking with you.
Before you go, Mr. Brunson, are you, you're not leaving the Sentinel Bulletin, are you?
No, no, no.
Okay, you're, this is just a recognition of all your years of taking great photographs.
Exactly, and I wanna give a shout-out to the Florida Sentinel. There was the beginning of me taking photography, and they were behind me 100 percent. Mr. Andrews and Black Andrews III and Civil K. Wells, they gave me my start. I always have a place in my heart for them. They mean a lot to me, they're like family. So, it started from there and it's continuing.
Well, you do a wonderful job, and I think you had told me before you came up here today that you have your favorite mother-in-law here.
Yes, I do.
And I thought that was interesting, that you were saying such nice things about her, and then I realized that your wife is here with you. So, that's good to know.
I'll say that, if she wasn't here, I'm not. I got the best mother-in-law in the world.
Well, congratulations. Keep up the great work.
Thank you.
All right, we go to public comments, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, the Tampa City Council welcomes public comment at this time. Thirty minutes have been set aside this morning for citizens speaking about matters that are not set for a public hearing. If you are here to speak on a matter that is set for a public hearing, you will have that opportunity later during today's meeting. Speakers addressing items on the agenda will be given preference before citizens speaking on non-agenda matters. Each speaker is given three minutes. Please begin by stating your name for the record, and it is requested that your comments are not directed personally to a council member or staff member, but rather issues directed to the council as a body. City Council appreciates your cooperation in maintaining orderly conduct and proper decorum. Thank you.
All right, for Speaker.
Morning, men, tis not Tampa, Florida. As the new administration is gonna be coming in one way or another, whosoever's gonna get their mayorship position, whosoever's gonna be representing different districts throughout the city, one thing need to be said about this city council in its totality, it's a do-nothing city council, plain and simple. The city is on automatic. The city is on automatic. If citizens have complaints, it's never addressed properly. As a matter of fact, it's never addressed at all, period, nothing. You come down here and they talk about some garbage about decor and decorum, and look around you. Look downstairs. Look downstairs. A mayor of a city that's calling African women in 2018, calling black women bitches, and calling for the lynching, the open lynching of a young African man. And you have seven people up there saying not one thing, and then you got one person talking about decorum. Look inside this building, a do-nothing city council, and look at decorum. Look around you. City council, one billion dollar budget, deficit, dirty carpet, dirty walls, a dirty ugly building. Let's talk about that kinda decorum. A budget that consists of millions of dollars every week, and not 26 percent of it goes to the African population or the African community. A do-nothing city council, and we have a representative for District Five that does absolutely, positively, nothing for District Five. Absolutely, positively, nothing for District Five. That's a certain kinda reality. You got bicycle lanes that if you look outside your window, wasted money, wasted taxpayers' dollars. You don't see a bicycle ride in one of those lanes for no reason whatsoever. I hope the new city council and the new mayor comes in, do something that's a reflection of what the city needs. Not all the police brutality and the racism and all the other stupidness that go with it. You got an ugly mayor downstairs that brags about he rides around in an ex-pimp automobile. You should be ashamed of that. That's like me bragging, saying I'm riding in the devil's carriage. Oh, the devil's carriage belongs to me now. And you got a new incoming mayor, potential incoming mayor, that's out in the hood pimping black people to Floyd Joyce funeral. Pimping black people, man, this have to stop. This wickedness have to stop. And you got a city council that meets on Thursday that can't even be the time, be in time for work. What kinda job is that? No respect for your constituents.
Next speaker.
Good morning, Council. My name is Jim Schimberg, Executive Vice President, Strategic Property Partners. We have a number of items on the agenda today that are on the non-public hearing, and we have one on the public hearing. I just wanna thank your staff for working with us on some very complicated matters that's taken a long time to get them to this point, but we do appreciate the hard work and dedication of your staff in working through these matters and bringing these matters to council, and we hope that we'll get approval today. Also, I wanted to wish the four outgoing council members well. I had a chance to work with you my first, your first two years in office, and, you know, despite, some people may think, I feel like you've served well, and I appreciate it, and wish you guys good luck in the future. Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Pastor Frank Williams, located 1112 East Scott Street. I wanna read some scriptures to y'all from the book of Jeremiah. "For I will restore health unto thee; I will heal thee of thy wounds," said the Lord, "because they called thee an outcast, saying, 'This is Zion, whom no man seek after.'" Thus said the Lord, "Behold, I will bring again the captivity of Jacob ten, and have mercy on his dwelling place; and the city shall be built upon her own heap; and the pallet shall remain after the man of the ark; and out of them shall proceed thanksgiving, and the voice of them that make it merry. I will multiply them; they shall not be few. I will also glorify them, and they shall not be small. Their cheering also shall be as a full time, and their congregation shall be established before them. And I will punish all that oppress them, all them that oppress them. Their nobles shall be as themselves, and their governor shall perceive from the midst of them; and I will cause him to draw near, and he shall approach unto me. For who is this that engage his heart to approach unto me?" said the Lord. "And ye shall be my peoples, and I will be your God. Behold, the whirlwind of the Lord goeth forth with fury, and continue in the wind. I shall fall with a pain upon the heap of the wicked. The fiery anger of the Lord shall not return until ye have done it, and until perform it the intent of the heart; and in latter day ye shall consider it." Come here, come forward. I want y'all to respect this man, 'cause he stand up for people, and I know y'all don't wanna respect him, but I'm gonna give you a donation, five two-dollar beer. People don't respect people like me and you, but God respects us all. And I want you to take this little gift as a gift from God Almighty.
All right, thank you, brother.
God bless you, man.
Brother, and for.
Thank you.
For your gift, brother, I'm gonna give you a gift.
Lord God.
Right there, brother.
Look at this, look at this.
All right.
Boy, that's a gift for God Almighty, thank you.
Thank you, brother, appreciate it.
And y'all, y'all respect this man, he try to stand up for justice, not for injustice, so we should respect one another. We're all a human being. May God bless all of y'all. Thank you, thank you very much.
You're welcome, brother.
I appreciate you, man, God bless you all. I'm outta here.
Next speaker.
I'm Harold Mudry, Harold's Rentals, I do business in a county, I'm around here. I'm a tent rental business, we just finished the Blues Fest in St. Pete. And some of the stuff that you have in these regulations, codes, or whatever you wanna call them, are being put by together, they're people who don't even know what tents are, don't know the different types, has never put up a tent. I just handed a document there that shows, I think I know what I'm talking about. I would like you to get people who know how to put up a tent, to put these codes together, not somebody that has a police record or something else. Get somebody who's qualified, who knows tents. The biggest problem we're having in the tent industry is outrageous fees. I just did the Blues Fest, I had over forty tents up in the air. The fee was a hundred and sixty-four dollars regardless if I put up one tent or two tents. Some of the fees are, proposal here would put us out of business, 'cause our customers cannot pay them. These codes and regulations look like they're meant to put us out of business. The amount of people employed in the special event industry is not a lot, but it's probably numbers over fifty thousand statewide. You cannot put us out of business. We want realistic regulations put together by people who know what they're talking about. And again, you have these pop-up tents sold by Walmart, made in China, they're not even fireproof. There's a storm coming in tomorrow at four o'clock eleven. I guarantee ya, every pop-up tent that's gonna be in St. Pete will be on the ground, 'cause they don't stake them down, they don't, they won't even meet the code. What I propose, that all these pop-up tents that sold in Walmart, if they're used for private property, it's fine. If it comes into the public, it has to meet the same codes and standards that the tent industry practices now. I just talked to my crew, we're gonna double-stake and triple-stake some of the tents for the storm tomorrow. That's not in the code, this is learned by experience. And again, you're asking people to put together regulations to put us out of business that cannot maybe not even spell tent. I appreciate, and thank you for listening to me, thank you.
Okay, next speaker.
Good morning, my name is Jean Leonard, I'm with Midway Tents. I'm here regarding item number seventy-nine. In, in this item, it says, Fire Marshal's inspections, the type of fiber being used does not meet code, how many, how quickly can a tent be evacuated? These are, there are a lot of different types of tents, some are structural tents. If you've ever been to a festival, you'll notice most of the festival tents do not have sidewalls on, so it can be easily evacuated. The tents that are going up, for example, at the Super Bowl, and I think a lot of these, the codes that you're trying to implement are having to deal with the Super Bowl, and the structural tents, which are tents that are gonna be needed to be put up by engineers, that are designed by engineers and put up with cranes, do not apply to the small ten-by-ten tents. By implementing these codes for these structural tents, should not be the same as a smaller tent. I understand a lot of you guys are leaving here in the next couple weeks, and a new, new board members are coming, so we're asking if we can table this or postpone any decision being made on this until we have a chance to educate the council members in the future before you guys make a decision. You know, give us an opportunity to re-educate or come back, you know, the tent community as a whole, come back and at least address the new commission, county commissioners, and give them an opportunity to hear our side before you make a decision. Fair enough? I mean.
You can address the city council.
City, I'm sorry, city council, I apologize for, but I hope you understand my intent, maybe not the words. We're not making a decision, but we have that opportunity, that's what we're looking for, is have an opportunity with the new council members.
Have it every week.
Thank you.
For the next four years.
Well, hopefully, we can get this resolved before the next four years. Thank you.
Good luck.
Next speaker.
Good morning, my name is Richard Romeo, 1309 East North Bay, Tampa, Florida. I'm here to address the order of demolition of my property. I have a few questions for the city council, and maybe you might be able to lead me in the right direction. This letter said, order of demolition. I'd like to know what are the alleged criteria to cause a building or partial building to be demoed? Also, I would like to ask, who was the inspector that inspect my, my partial house that I'm trying to rebuild? I need to know some of these questions right here, and why haven't I got a copy of the, of the inspection? Or the name of the inspector? None of these were presented to me at all. Who do I need to find out? In which direction do I need to go?
Sir, have you contacted any of the council members about this privately yet?
Yes, and I appreciate Mr. Martin, he did.
Mr. Who?
Mr. Martin Shelby.
Mr. Shelby, is he our attorney? Did you contact any of the city council members?
Oh, yes, I've sent Mr. Frank Reddick several letters. This is not the first time I'm up here, I was up here last month also.
You know, it's hard for us to answer anything when we don't have any documentation on our hands.
Well, I did give it to your front office, and they did sign.
Got it, I understand it, I haven't seen it, okay? Because if it was given to Mr. Reddick, Mr. Reddick was working on it and his staff. So, for us, we can't answer questions here on a constituent concern. I would defer to Mr. Reddick and his office as to what is happening, and I would suggest that you would meet with Mr. Reddick afterwards or his staff, or I guess Mr. Shelby, who is moving his hands in lots of different ways, has some answers for you. And if you wanna do it in open council, that's fine, but I mean, on a constituent service issue, when we haven't seen any information.
It could be private or public.
Well, hang on, we haven't seen any information, I can't answer you, and this is not the point for us to answer you, this is for you to just make a point, and I just wanna make sure you understood that.
Okay, well, I guess I was misunderstood, I thought you would hold committee.
We are, sir, I'm saying that we don't have debates or conversations with our constituents here, if you have a constituent service issue, which is what you have, we typically take it up with staff and the administration based on your concerns. Since you've already contacted a council member, I think that we should wait for the council member's office to decide what's going on with it. That's how we typically do things.
I understand that, and this been, you know, several months, I mean, I have not heard from him.
I understand that, I'm saying that this, we can't, we can't make any comment right now about it, because we don't know anything about it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Shelby?
Yes.
Before you leave, because.
Don't, don't, sir, Mr. Romeo, if you, if you could stay at the podium, please.
All right, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe when Mr. Romeo was last here, you referred me to meet with him outside and take his information, and what I did was, I relayed the information and the fact that he appeared before city council to Sal Rigerio and gave him the contact information, and Mr. Rigerio responded that he would be handling it, and I did receive a phone call, a voicemail yesterday from Mr. Romeo saying he had yet to, so it was my intention today to follow up with Mr. Rigerio. The department is aware of Mr. Romeo's situation, he relayed that to me through the email, and that he did indicate that he was going to take responsibility for responding.
Sir, so that should tell you that nobody have ignored your concern.
I was not really implying that, because Mr. Martin did contact me several times.
This is government, it's not gonna happen when you want it to happen. It's not gonna happen when you want it to happen.
Well, I don't want him to come in and damn on my house, and you know, I...
So keep that in mind. And this is government. And, and, and you, you say you want something done, and you request it to be done. It don't mean it gonna happen at the same time.
I understand that.
All right, so it's, it's a work in progress.
Yes, sir.
So we'll make sure that Mr. Sal Rigerio be in contact with you.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next person.
Good morning, counsel. My name is Lauren Shepherd. I'm the chief operating officer at the Strad Center for the Performing Arts. I'm here this morning, and I reside at sixty-nine oh one Ebtide Avenue in Apollo Beach. I'm here, recently, I've met with a number of you to discuss some concerns that the Strad Center has with the air tower project, which will be constructed right directly south of the Performing Arts Center. And I'm, I'm here to report some good progress being made. Yesterday, I met with Bob McDonough and spoke item by item on the concerns that we have regarding the tower, some of the concerns that I've brought forward to you. And I've received assurances from him that they will be addressed, and they sound like they're gonna be addressed to our satisfaction. So today's good news, we're, we're here to support. I think there may be an item on the agenda today that is regarding the right-of-way and perhaps the release of some land to contribute to that. And then I know there's another item that was continued to next week. And I'm here today to just say that the partnership is strong, and we're working very well together. And we're looking forward to a positive outcome and another addition to improved streets, a larger arrival plaza, and downtown residence in proximity to the Strad Center. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, do we have anyone else wish to speak during public comment at this time? All right. This is Martin. He placed a walk-on, walk-on on the agenda. You wanna address that now?
Thank you, Chairman. Jorge Martin, City Attorney's Office. We do have a walk-on. This is a resolution approving the execution by the mayor, an attestation by the city clerk, of a termination of an unsecured rights agreements between the city of Tampa and CMJ Fee LLC related to Central Ebor complex and providing an effective date. I have... The reason for the termination, members of council, is that for several years after CMJ took over ownership of the Central Ebor complex, they were paying a yearly amount. That, that agreement, providing for that yearly amount, would terminate if they sold the asset. And what happened here, CMJ did not sell the asset in its name. They sold the corporation to a third party, which is the current owner. Current owner, in an instance where they would have received title to the property, would have done an accounting, would have determined whether there were any amounts left over, and then the city would get a percentage after that, after the payment of creditors and other parties ahead of them. In this instance, they have met with administration. Mr. McDonough has spoken to them, and they have established that had they gone through the process of a conveyance, the audit would show that there would be no amounts left for the city. They have offered to pay one hundred thousand dollars for termination and end our relationship, the city's relationship with Central Ebor now and forever. Because I understand whatever payments were left, all the guarantees were made last year.
Okay. Any questions from council? Ms. Suarez.
Okay, Mr. Martin, let me, let me get this straight. So because the corporation was sold, we have to make a new agreement? And then we're also having the termination portion of it, you know, instituted? Is that correct?
Uh, there is no new agreement. We're just terminating the existing agreement.
So this is the existing agreement, but with a new named, uh, party?
Uh, it's a new party, they kept the same name.
Okay, it's a new party.
Basically, what they did is, instead of buying the asset in their name, they bought the corporation, single asset corporation, owned Central Ebor. So they own Central Ebor now, but their name now is CMJ Fee.
Okay, does it change any other aspects of their ownership? Is, this is just a, you know, ministerial thing in order to make sure that it goes through?
Correct.
All right. And there's been no changes to what the original agreement was?
No. What, what this will do is terminate the original agreement.
That's the change.
Yeah, yeah. That was a change, 'cause of the, 'cause of the change.
It's a big change.
That is the change. We terminate the agreement.
Yeah, we terminate the agreement, but there's really no other change other than the termination.
Yeah, yeah, right, right.
And, well, hopefully, they will. We are gonna collect the money, right?
Uh-huh.
We're all gonna, like, we are gonna collect the money?
According to, Bobby's got a check on their salary.
In one, in one fell swoop, this is not, this is not, it's not twenty-five thousand now.
It's a one-time payment.
One-time payment, thank you.
Let me hear the question, comment from council. All right, do we have a motion to move a resolution?
Second.
All right, got a motion from Mr. Suarez, second about Mr. Maniscalco. I want to figure that motion to have.
Aye.
I'll pose. Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
He should help the budget.
Do we have an request?
Get blocked.
Do we have an request by the public for reconsideration of legislated matter? None, and we go to committee reports. Item number three, Mr. Suarez, would you read that?
Uh, yes, sir. I move an ordinance for first reading consideration, an ordinance amending ordinance number two zero one nine dash four eight, ordained by the city council of the city of Tampa on March twenty-first, twenty nineteen, to correct a Scrivener's error, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Second.
All right, got a motion from Mr. Suarez, second about Mr. Maniscalco. I want to figure that motion to have.
Aye.
On May sixteen, two thousand nineteen, at nine thirty a.m.
Okay, we go to committee report, public safety, Mr. Moran.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move items, uh, four through five.
All right, got a motion from Mr. Moran, second by Mr. Corn. I want to figure that motion to have.
Aye.
I'll pose. All right, uh, go to Park and Recreation, Mr. Maniscalco.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I move items six through eight.
All right, got a motion from Mr. Maniscalco, second by Mr. Corn. I want to figure that motion to have.
Aye.
I'll pose. Okay, go to public works, Ms. Yola Kapine.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move item nine through seventeen.
Okay.
One, one is being continued, I mean.
One continued to, yeah, but that's continuation to, to twenty-fifth.
Okay, so I move item ten through seventeen, nine being continued.
All right, got a motion from Ms. Kapine, second by...
Second.
Uh, Mr. Corn, I want to figure that motion to have.
Aye.
All right, go to finance committee, Mr. Corn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move items eighteen, nineteen, and twenty.
Second.
Okay, got a motion from Mr. Corn, second by Mr. Moran. I want to figure that motion to have.
Aye.
I'll pose. All right, we go to buildings on it. Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to ask that number thirty-two have a separate vote.
I'm sorry, what, ma'am?
Number thirty-two has separate vote.
No, we have to, we have to continue.
It's actually being continued.
It's being continued.
Yeah.
We're continuing.
Why? Can't, we have to vote on it being continued? I want it separate to vote it out.
No, I have, I'm gonna do, that's exactly how I'm gonna do it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's exactly how I'm gonna do it.
All right, uh, 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 Buildings on Preserving Committee, Mr. Suarez.
Thank you, Chair. I'm gonna move items twenty-one through thirty-one and thirty-four to forty-four.
Okay.
I got a motion from, uh, Mr. Suarez, second by Mr. Moran. I want to figure that motion to have.
Aye. I'm also, I'm also going to move item twenty, thirty-two to be continued to April twenty-fifth at the evening session.
Discussion.
Sure. I got a second for the discussion.
Thank you. Yes, um, okay. I'm curious, because this is our last meeting on our last day, and we had a week to get information. And there's, did anyone receive information on this sale at all?
Well, I was told that they needed another week to, to talk to us all and give us what we needed. That was why the, I was told it was being continued for that reason.
I did, I got the same notice, but really, okay, they put this deal together, but they have no information for us. Okay, that's, this is, just pay attention on the, on the last day of the last meeting, at the last hour, okay?
For the final moment.
There you go, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's in discussion.
I would be perfectly happy to address that. The one outstanding issue is where we relocate the police horses. And I'm working to do that, and I need a little more time. Tico is more than happy to attest to the fact that their only and sole reason for buying this would be for a solar farm. It's not a, an investment by them or a land flip. There were some things in the editorial the other day, which I found interesting, about talking about the potential for it as a mixed-use project. It's not near an exit at the interstate. It does not have utility services, so that land is not appropriate for any of those uses. But I will have more information for you next week, because the one outstanding issue that I haven't solved yet is a relocation for the police horses, of which there are six.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay. I got the motion.
People's money.
Got a motion from Mr. Suarez, second by...
Second.
Mr. Cohen's seconded, yeah, I think so.
And that's for the continued, continuation, yeah.
Yeah, we got a motion from Mr. Suarez, second by Mr. Corn. I want to figure that motion to have.
Aye.
I'll pose. All right.
And Chair, on item number thirty-three, I move the substitute resolution.
Second.
All right, got a motion from Mr. Suarez, and second by Mr. Moran. I want to figure that motion to have.
Aye.
I'll pose. All right, transportation, Mr. Suarez.
Thank you, Chair. I move items forty-five to forty-eight and fifty to fifty-three. Second.
All right, got a motion from Mr. Suarez, second by Mr. Corn. I want to figure that motion to have.
Aye.
I'll pose.
In addition, I move the substitute resolution on number forty-nine.
Second.
All right, got a motion from Mr. Suarez, second by Mr. Corn. I want to figure that motion to have.
Aye.
I'll pose. All right.
Chair, I move a, on number fifty-four, schedule a review hearing on July eighteenth, twenty nineteen, at ten thirty a.m.
Second.
All right, got a motion from Mr. Suarez, second by Mr. Corn. I want to figure that motion to have.
Aye.
I'll pose. All right.
Mr. Chair, I move to open items fifty-five through sixty-six, which are our nine-thirty public hearings.
Fifty-six or fifty-eight?
Sixty-six, excuse me. Fifty-five through sixty-six are nine-thirty.
Okay. All right, we'll go to a nine-thirty public hearing, and we go to item number fifty-five. Item?
We need to vote on the open.
Oh, okay. Motion from Mr. Corn, second by...
Second.
Mr. Suarez, I want to figure that motion to have.
Aye.
I'll pose. All right, we'll, we'll go to pub, uh, public hearing, item number fifty-five. Good to see Mr. Miller in the audience today. Item number fifty-five. Anyone here for item number fifty-five?
I think Jim's coming up, yeah.
Oh, oh, okay.
Sorry, Counsel, Jim Schimber with Strategic Property Partners. We're here to answer any questions. We're changing the name of Old Water Street to Water Street.
Okay, any questions for that? All right, anyone in the public wish to speak on item number fifty-five?
Move to close.
Second.
All right, got a motion from Mr. Corn, second by Mr. Suarez. I want to figure that motion to have.
Aye.
I'll pose. Uh, Mr. Corn, would you read item fifty-five?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I move an ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance by the city of Tampa renaming and designating that certain portion of Old Water Street extending from South Franklin Street to Channel Side Drive within the city of Tampa, Hillsborough County, Florida, so that it will be known as Water Street, repealing all ordinances and conflicts, providing an effective date.
All right, got a motion from, from, from Mr. Corn, second by Ms. Kapine. Please recall your vote.
Motion carried unanimously with Viera absent.
Okay, we go to item number fifty-six. Anyone here for item number fifty-six? Okay.
Good morning, counsel. Kristen Moore, Legal Department. This is the second reading on the comprehensive rewrite of the city's tree and landscape code. Before we go into the public hearing component, there is one request for a change from the administration. We originally had hoped that this second reading would be scheduled for April fourth. It's actually got pushed back to today, the eighteenth. In addition, we've been working on training materials and, and starting the process of trying to train staff and setting up training modules for our boards. And as we've gone through that process, we've determined that we're probably gonna need a little bit more time to get this successfully and fully implemented. We've also had a lot of questions from property owners along those lines as well. So we would like to ask for a June first effective date on this ordinance, just to give us a little bit more ramp-up time to get both property owners, business professionals, and our staff and boards all ready for this pretty comprehensive change. I am here if you have any questions, and if not, I know there are some people from the public that are hoping to speak to you today.
Okay, we could, and then...
If I could ask your question, Chair? What, what changes are made on this? Since I had to use quite a bit of lung power to do the first reading, what are we changing on this thing?
Nothing has changed in the title. It'll be the same you read last time.
Right.
But as far as the, the changes that you received in the memo, as we went through, there has been a lot of revisions to this. I missed one of the changes that you had directed at the February hearing when you transmitted to the Planning Commission. It was correct in what went to the Planning Commission, but it got missed in the final draft of the ordinance. And that was just to make the new setbacks, the new automatic setbacks applicable to all lots. That correction was made. There were also two references that were broken as section changes, section numbers had changed. Those are corrected in this as well. Those were the only changes that came out.
Okay, so no substantive changes?
No substantive changes.
It's catching small little errors that were part of it?
Yes.
And that is the only thing that's been changed?
That, that is the only thing that has changed. And then we are requesting that June first date, and those are the only changes.
Okay.
Okay?
Ms. Moran.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Being a little bit more specific, are there any changes in the tree sizes and replacement of those trees?
No, there, there are no changes.
In other words, are two-inch trees?
The, yeah, it's still the two-and-a-half inch trees that have been...
Oh, you said two-and-a-half. You said two-and-a-half.
It, the, there is a change from current code to the new code. Current code contemplates a two-inch caliper replacement tree. The new code requires a two-and-a-half inch caliper replacement tree, but that has been true throughout every version of this new code. It's been the two-and-a-half inch caliber. So that has not, that has not changed since your readings. That is a change from old code to...
Being, being a little on the realistic side, I don't know the life cycle of a two-tree, a two-inch tree, if it's transplanted from one to another, and the life cycle of a two-and-a-half, and a half-inch tree being transplanted to another cycle. The availability of variables of life and not extending the size of the tree growing, in other words, a tree is gonna die, between a two and a two-and-a-half. And, and that's what I'm interested in. And when you look at two to two-and-a-half, that's twenty percent of, of the total of two-and-a-half inches.
Yes.
And then I'd like to know the cost between the two trees, two trees, two-and-a-half inch trees, and the life expectancy of survival between the two trees.
I also do not know that, but I believe Ms. Kathy Beck...
Neither do I, that's why I'm asking.
I'm just a lawyer, uh, but our natural resources...
You're just a lawyer.
Just a lawyer. But Ms. Beck is here, and I believe she's ready to address that.
Good morning, counsel. Kathy Beck, Natural Resources Coordinator.
Kathy Beck, Natural Resources Coordinator. In reference to the two-inch tree, to the two-and-a-half inch tree, the two-inch tree is typically a thirty-gallon, grown in a thirty-gallon container. The two-and-a-half typically a forty-five gallon. I did do some research from local tree growers, and they have sent out tree brokers throughout the state to get cost comparisons, and it came to about seventy to a hundred dollar difference between the two-inch to two-and-a-half inch.
Wow. And...
Did that answer...
What about the life expectancy between...
There's no difference. It's just the container size. It's if all things equal...
Is there any benefit?
Pardon?
Ratio between the two for the general public?
I'm not...
In other words, the life cycle of a two-inch tree, how long does it take to become a two-and-a-half inch tree?
Very quickly. They...once established, they...within a year, within a year, two years.
So there's no difference in the life expectancy of the tree being transported between a thirty-gallon and forty-five gallon?
No, sir.
But there is a cost with no difference in relation to that cost?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last part.
I'm confused myself.
Okay.
The difference in cost between the life cycle of the two-inch tree and a two-and-a-half inch tree related to the actual performance of the tree would be very minimal.
Minimal, minimal.
Because the tree's going to grow this year.
Yes, sir. That's correct, minimal.
And what is the cost of a two-inch tree? Because I don't know either.
Probably about three-hundred and fifty to four-hundred dollars.
I'm in the wrong...
In the current market. It fluctuates. It fluctuates.
And I know, and I'm sorry for asking, but it's just...
That's okay.
And I see that the sponsor of the tree is here, and he's the godfather of trees. And he's not standing up. I'm not going to mention his name. There he is, Joe Chilora, very, very nice guy. He really worked hard back in the seventies for this.
He has.
And I admire him, not only for this, for his public service, not only here, but in the county commission. And then the...when there's a limb that protruded from a neighbor's yard into your yard, and it's a small limb, do you have to call some field inspector to go inspect?
Not unless it's twenty-four inches or larger, and the limb is four inches in diameter or larger.
How much a diameter?
Four inches. Right. Then it would require a permit. Those are considered structural limbs of the tree?
And I'm asking a lot of questions because it's coming up quickly. Are we prepared to hire different people to do it? Because as I understand and read part of this, you have an inspection to see if it's legal, the size of the limb. And then you have a re-inspection, I guess, to see if they cut it down, and you have to have a permit. Am I correct?
Yes, sir. It's one inspection.
How much is that going to cost the city to do that?
I don't think we've estimated that. We are looking at doing something the county has instituted, which is a form, an affidavit, by the certified arborists stating they're pruning it to ANSI standards, which should expedite that permit. It's an affidavit that the tree service signs that says they will be pruning a branch four inches over in diameter, and that they will be pruning it to the American National Standards Institute, and we'll issue the permit. And then do random checks. They're all certified licensed arborists, so we're assuming they're doing the right thing.
So then we're creating something, but we ourselves are not going to check?
Pardon me?
We're not going to check ourselves?
Yes, sir, we will be checking.
Well, then you've got to hire somebody to do that, because we don't have the forces now, do we?
Yes, sir. I'd have to...I'm not prepared to...
No, because I want to be complete when I vote yea or whatever. And I want to make sure that all the...I don't...the next administration come in and say, hey, I've got to hire some people now on the tree, you've got to give me some money. And I say, well, dummy Charlie, when you had the chance, you didn't ask the questions.
We've currently got a forester position open to hire as...today.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
All right, Ms. Capina?
Okay, so I'm going to go back to the two-inch and the two-and-a-half inch. That's something that you brought up.
Yes.
If there's no difference, why? 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 If it grows in a year to a two-and-a-half, why are we adding that expense to...
Or two years. Currently, right now, calipers measured six inches above the root ball of the tree, so that two inches is measured there. So we're really getting one-inch trees by the time they're being planted. We're trying to get a true two-inch tree in the ground. And all of our calculations based on mitigation are based on a two-inch, as opposed to a one-inch.
And...
And when you measure it, DBH. At two inches, six inches above the ground, they taper, trees taper.
And all the trees that we have in the city have been, up to this point, planted at two-inch?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
And they're pretty good out there, right?
Um, I'm assuming so. If they're watered properly and taking care of...
Obviously, we've got all kinds of thousands of trees out there.
Yes, ma'am.
Done a good job.
So it's...yeah, it's a good, a very good job. Thank you. That helps me with my decision.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, we'll go to public. Anyone in the public which should speak on item number fifty-six?
Good morning, Counsel. Steve McAlini. I'm really here to talk about only two issues. One is the two-inch tree versus the two-and-a-half inch tree requirements. And I know that it's not the expense, it's the availability. So when you go to the nurseries, they grow two-inch, four-inch, six-inch, eight-inch trees. They don't grow normally two-and-a-half inch trees. They're difficult to obtain, and we respectfully request that you go back to the city standard, which is currently two inches, not two-and-a-half inches. And the second thing is regarding the tree trimming. Anything over twenty-four inches would require a permit. They don't have the staff to do it. You're going to make anybody and anyone who's trimming a tree, and I'm not talking about grand trees, this is less than a grand tree, obtain a permit, which is...it takes time, it takes money. A typical homeowner is not going to go through that process if they hire some yardman or their own yardman to trim trees, and they respectfully shouldn't be knowing what they're doing and not going to destroy the tree. So we've run some numbers, and the effective number of persons you'd have to hire to handle the current workload would be ten new inspectors, just to process the tree trimming side. So respectfully request that you remove that provision. It requires a permit for trimming those limbs, and this is on private property. It doesn't apply to right-of-way trees. So those two issues are...they kind of loom large over the implementation of the process. We've worked really long and hard to get all of these other provisions in the code, and those are two issues that probably should be addressed. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do you support this ordinance, or are you against it?
Support the ordinance with those two amendments.
Okay. Ms. Capina?
Yes, so you're saying that it's very difficult to get a two-and-a-half inch tree?
It's difficult...
So you're going to go...since you can't get a two, you're going to go to a three or four, or whatever it is you're saying?
Correct. They're not available generally. The nurseries don't grow them in these capacities. The city is talking about how they measure the diameter of the tree, and...
So the city's looking at the measurement and the nursery and the growers are...
They're not. They grow their trees in containers, and there are certain sizes, and that's what you get.
So what...in a three-inch tree, what is that container? How much is that? If you have to go to three-inch or four-inch?
I'm not really sure what size container they grow in. I would...
I think somebody's getting up their mind.
Maybe a forty-five gallon container, I don't know. But it's not the expense. It's not the fifty or sixty or seventy dollars. It's availability and practicality. If you go to a nursery...
Do you know the answer?
Yes.
Okay. Do you mind if I ask that? If he answers it? Thank you. Okay.
Good morning, Counsel. Ricky Pederica, five-oh-one...or sorry, four-hundred North Tampa Street, Suite Ten Forty. A two-inch or two-and-a-half inch tree are both able to be planted at thirty-gallon. And the replacement requirement is two-and-a-half inch or thirty-gallon, which technically permits a two-inch tree still. So I...in my mind, as a practitioner, there's no real change in the size, because thirty-gallon still permits.
Two-inch or thirty-gallon?
Either...the code states either one will suffice.
Two-and-a-half or thirty-gallon?
Yeah, two and...yeah, so two-and-a-half or thirty-gallon, so...and they plant the two-inch in thirty-gallon, so...
Not by here.
Here it says twenty-five gallon.
Yeah, it says twenty-five there.
This is Florida Grade Standards, which is what the code is based on. It's just saying that any container larger than twenty-five, which thirty would be. So if you provide...if anyone provides a thirty-gallon tree, whether it's two or two-and-a-half, it meets grades and standards, and it meets the thirty-gallon provision of the code currently proposed.
So how is that going to help with the caliper, which they were talking about, the measurement that we're talking, that if it's a two-inch? I'm still trying to comprehend...
In my mind, the caliper's measured six inches above the ground. The replacement was originally based on DBH, which is four-and-a-half feet above the ground, which to adjust for that dimensional difference, you usually subtract a half-inch to an inch. So that gets it to the two-inch DBH with the two-and-a-half inch caliber. But mitigation now is based on canopy, so it's...and the calculation on how the replacement is crunched now is canopy, so it's like a...speaking to the inch requirement is not that...a big deal in my mind.
But it was a big deal to our staff. So what I want to say is this. So if you can...if it's...if they plant a two-inch and a thirty-gallon, what was accomplished? I mean, the same...it turns out to be the same thing.
It does.
I don't know what...why would they do that? Why is that being done? If they really wanted a two-and-a-half inch, why are they allowing something that could be two-inch and a thirty? The option that really is...
I think it's...I think at some point it was three and forty-five gallon, and that was hitting supplier-demand issues. And we moved and collectively went down to two-and-a-half, thirty-gallon, or maybe it was two-and-a-half, forty-five, and then when it was realized that two-and-a-half can still fit in a thirty-gallon, it just became two-and-a-half and thirty-gallon. That part I don't know. I just want to point out that two-and-a-half or thirty-gallon is the same as two-inch or thirty-gallon.
Exactly. Exactly. So I don't understand...I'm still trying to digest the change. If you're going...if a thirty-gallon is okay, then a two-inch should be okay. It's that simple.
That's my understanding. It's almost as if thirty-gallon alone is the criteria.
Exactly. Thank you for helping me.
Mr. Suarez?
If I could ask a question, Mr. McAlini. Was this knowledge not known beforehand?
No, it was...some of this was inserted at the last change.
Okay. Wasn't it...I think that our lawyer said that it went to the Planning Commission as two-and-a-half.
Right.
Are you disagreeing with that assessment?
No, it was always agreed that we would address it here.
Okay, so...well, let me stop you right there. So that was known then?
And we raised that objection then, too.
All right. Did you...during the first...listen, I read this whole damn thing, okay? I don't remember you coming here talking about this two weeks ago. So my question is, can't this move forward in a way that can, you know, in the practical application of some of these things, be done in a different way? Because we're not going to measure...let me finish. We're not going to measure what the supply-demand of trees are. We can only put things in the ordinance based on what we want for the canopy. Would you agree with that?
Well...
In terms of how we write ordinances, you've been around here a long time, so don't you think that that's true?
Yes, sir, but they also have the inch measurements in there on a chart.
I got it. My point is, is that that was there before. There's a lot of different measurements. That matrix is a pretty large matrix, and I guarantee you, somebody made a lot of effort to put that together. And I think that our folks have been trying to make a good-faith estimate on this. My point in telling you all this is that you're arguing about something that we have no control over, which is the marketplace, right? All we can do is base our knowledge on what we want to see in terms of the canopy. That's the way I look at this, all right? So changing it, changing it, isn't going to change anything other than, you know, let's say we do it at two-and-a-half, and they go, well, you know, we have a shortage on two-inch trees or two-inch, you know? I mean, you know, we've got to come up to a solution and a resolution now. And I think that, you know, all the work that we put in, well over two years. I mean, the landing strip was two years. The flight was about three years. Okay? So when you come here now to...
Yes, sir.
Yeah. I mean, so when you come here now to make a minor change, quote-unquote, it makes...it gives me heartburn, because you're talking about a situation that has to do with market conditions, based on what you said. Based on what you said. We're never going to be able to chase market conditions in an ordinance. And I think you know that. I think we all know that. So I just want to make sure I was correct about this. This is not a new, you know, standard that was brought out last week or two weeks ago, and you didn't get a chance to present it to us. That's the problem that I have with it.
What happened was that I approached the staff about it and the city attorney's office, and they indicated that the provision of the size of the tree could not be addressed today without making it go back to first reading.
I get it.
The issue regarding the tree trimming and the permit for that could be addressed without impacting the ordinance going forward and being adopted today. So there were two different provisions. So I wasn't asking that that be addressed immediately, and what I'd asked the staff and the city attorney's office was to look at that and bring back a recommendation in sixty days. Obviously, it would not be this city council that's sitting today.
Sixty-day...sixty...meaning holding this off for sixty days?
No, no, no.
Okay. I want to make sure we're clear about this.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I didn't want to do anything...
If you're talking about rules in terms of how we implement the ordinance, that's one thing. If you're talking about changing the ordinance itself so it doesn't go forward, that's something else.
No, sir.
And I want to make sure we're clear about it.
No, I'm not trying to delay any adoption of anything.
All right, thank you.
The small provision about deleting the three words that says the permit required for private property tree trimming for specimen trees was...the only thing it was asked for was that to be deleted.
Right.
And the staff and the city attorney's office indicated that that would not delay the adoption of this ordinance. The other portion is something we have to work with, with both technical standards, as Mr. Pederica pointed out, and perhaps we can address it there or bring back an amendment if you're so desired in sixty days to look at that. But the most important one right now...
I may not desire sixty days only because I won't be here. So it's not up to me as to whether or not they're going to be desirous of a sixty-day wait.
I understand.
And that's perfectly fine. My point is, is that I want to talk about moving forward on this portion of it, and I think that we're...I understand where you're coming from now. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Right. I'm in agreement. We're not trying to slow this down.
Thank you.
But I would like your consideration on the tree trimming.
All right, next speaker?
Okay, ready to public comment now? My name's Mary Lou Bailey, and I live in Hyde Park, and I've been involved on that flight for three long years. And I like to cook at home, and I'm going to say, in opening, put a fork in it, it's done. Let's get this passed. There's been a lot of negotiations, a lot of meeting, a lot of research about supply and demand, and we need to just move on, guys. I support the adoption of the tree code, because it does balance property rights with the collective benefit of the tree canopy to the community. It strengthens mitigation after tree removal by focusing on canopy replacement type of tree and area of the city. It's mindful of state-level rules and liabilities. It applies scientific criteria, standards, and measures for removal and mitigation. It clarifies the requirements and considerations for use by governing bodies, as opposed to just opinions. And it increases the scope of administrative approvals that the staff can grant, but that's based on science and precedent decisions. So those are the summary reasons why, after three years, I say, let's get this thing passed, please. I sent you all a letter. I'm going to give it to your attorney here, so that it's officially in the record, but I sent this to you as one of about a dozen letters I've sent you over the last three years. And I hope that next time I'm here, we're talking about something other than this tree ordinance. Lastly, as I've said in every one of the letters I've drafted to you, that in six months after the adoption, we should have a structured public review of the impact of this. So if these little things we're arguing about here today at the last minute that have been discussed, ad nauseam, are really a problem, in six months, we should change it. But today, we should pass this thing that we've been trying to birth longer than an elephant's gestation. And I know something about that because of my work at the zoo. Okay? So, being a little funnier than my normal sense, because I'm kind of losing patience. Let's get this done, please, thank you.
I'm Krista Metcalf, I live at 117 West North Street, and I cannot be as eloquent as that. But I'm here speaking on behalf of the Old Seminole Heights Neighborhood Association. We are a neighborhood that has a beautiful tree canopy, and we wish to preserve it. We've sent letters to all of you, supporting the passage of this new revised tree code. We like it very much, we will, we believe it will help preserve the urban forest that we have in Tampa, that is so attractive to our homeowners and future homeowners. Thank you very much.
Hi, good morning. My name is Nancy Stevens, and I'm a 505 UREAV. Today, I'm here speaking on behalf of the 19,000 members and supporters of the Tampa Bay Sierra Club. We want to thank you all for working on this for years, and we urge you to pass it. I did send a letter as well. And I wasn't going to read the whole thing, but I'm going to just, I am because of the, I want this passed today. We've all been working on it, and we fully support it. It's, the Tampa ordinance rewrite is a combination of many months of work by the city's natural resources, legal departments, and working in collaboration with the tree advocates and the builders. We've had many meetings, we've talked about this for a long time. It's balanced to protect Tampa's trees while allowing residents, neighbors, builders, to use their private property under the auspices of, in concert with, the city's oversight and supervision. We look forward to the implementation of the ordinance and increased enforcement and monitoring of the tree code and mitigation. And as Mary Lou Swell pointed out, we should have a review of this in six months. If some of the changes are not sufficiently protecting the important tree canopy of Tampa, we look forward to working with city council and others to make prior changes. Thank you very much.
Cynthia Duncan, I would like to thank Honorable Counsel for working with us for a very long time on this tree code. I'd like to echo what Ms. Bailey said, that we need to pass this today, and take a close, hard look at it in six months, as has already been directed by the council. As far as the tree trimming, I know you all remember seven February, I do, and you agree that limbs over, trees over 24 inches diameter, specimen trees with limbs over four inches should require a permit. Ms. Beck has briefed us repeatedly that Tampa loses a lot of trees through improper pruning. It doesn't do us any good to try to protect our canopy if we allow trees to be made hazardous through improper pruning. So I would like to say, please leave that as it is. As for the mitigation, we remember the big, nice briefing we got on the mitigation, and I can't speak as eloquently as Mr. Samnick, the guy in the bow tie, did, who knows a lot more about trees than I do. But the mitigation strategy was based on not inches for inches of wood, it was based on how many trees at 2.5 caliber do you have to plant to replace the canopy of the tree that was removed in a five-year period? Ms. Beck just said a two-inch tree will take another year to get to become a 2.5-inch, maybe two years, it varies with the trees, right? So if we go down on the caliper, we're not replacing the canopy in five years, it's now going to be six or seven. So if there's a concern, and somebody comes forward with some estimates from a new number of nurseries that says, "Hey, this is how much the trees cost," I believe it's 2.5 inches and 30 gallon. The last version of the code I looked at, and we went round and round about this, was 2.5 and 30. So if someone comes up with estimates that it is completely onerous to replace the trees with 2.5, then we need to relook that, and, and as soon as that, the facts are brought to your attention. But please pass this code today as is, without further changes, and we look forward to working with natural resources and the new council in the future on this. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Council. Mike Peterson, on behalf of the Greater Tampa Realtors. As you know, we've been monitoring the process, as you have, a very long time. We've reviewed the final proposal and are in support. I do believe that perhaps a six-month review to see how things are working in the marketplace is worthy. But for the most part, it's a great comprehensive effort based on defensible science, adds some predictability for everybody, so perhaps a few tweaks will come down the line, but this has been a great effort. And so, for those of you who lived through it, it's been kind of like living through the code enforcement, and the sign ordinance, and all the other thrills we've had in recent years. For those of you leaving, thanks for working with us, and we hope this gets passed today. Thank you.
You're the second speaker that actually said that we're a government agency making decisions based on science. That is really a novel, a novel proposition.
It took me nine years to hear that.
Good morning, Council. Andy Joe Skaglony, Vice Chairman, Greater Tampa Political Affairs. On behalf of 11,855 members, we have spent a tremendous amount of time on this, and are in full support. It's a fair balance of private property rights, is what we advocate for all homeowners out there. Conservation is simply a smart investment, and these trees are the lungs of our land. And in closing, I'd just like to thank Kathy Beck and her staff, because she's just done a phenomenal job over 45 years. That's the reason we have the tree canopy that we have in this city. So, thank you.
Natasha Goodley, 2705 East 24th Avenue. As I'm a fan of conservation, and I do love the ordinance, I would ask that you do take into consideration the cost that it could place on some residents. I live in East Tampa, and I had a diseased tree in my yard that had to be cut down, and I know from what I, from trimming and then cutting down the expenses that I spent, I know a lot of my neighbors could not afford that, especially with the, adding the, the permit for the trimming of trees. So possibly coming back in six months and looking at it, again, I'm a fan of it, but I'd just like us to consider the cost that it would be on some residents, as well as during hurricane season. It might cause a problem with people not pruning their trees for the hurricane, because in my neighborhood, we lost power for three days, and it wasn't because of anything but dead trees that fell on power lines. So just, if there's some type of consideration that we could, for people who may not be able to afford it. Thank you.
Am I going to show up? Good morning, Council. Gary Brown, 491 Severna Avenue. I'm here to also echo what was just told to you. I'm in total agreement with what Ms. Bailey said about how we've been working on this for so many years, and yet during this timeframe, we've been asking questions, "How much will this cost the city to administrate?" And we're specifically talking about this pruning issue. Staff would never give us an answer. We'd ask Tom Snelling, we'd ask Kathy Beck, Kathy Coyle, nobody would reply. What is it going to cost to implement this? So being a very ordinary citizen in the city, I went to our Urban Canopy Forest Study, and out of that study came this information. There are over 9 million trees in the city. Of those, about 50% are on residential properties. So that's 186,000 trees. If only 10% of those needed to be pruned each year, that's 18,600 trees. There are 250 inspection days a year. This ordinance would require two inspections for the pruning. One to go out and tell somebody where to cut it, and then the inspector to go back and see if they cut it correctly. So if you multiply those 74 inspection days by two, that comes to, to the 149 inspection days. In an eight-hour day, our inspectors, inspectors currently can handle about 15 inspections a day. Do the math. That's 10 full-time inspectors that would need to be hired by natural resources, who currently cannot keep up with what they have on their plate. So, I agree, in six months, we can come back and look at this. Staff needs to report to council, "What is the cost of this?" And they're not doing it. If they do it, and everybody agrees that it's not onerous, your council's the one that passes these, these budgets, then pass it. But you don't know. You're, you're being asked to make a decision, you don't have the facts. Three years, you'd think you'd have the facts, okay? Very quickly, on the two to two, two and a half inch caliper, it's been two inches for years, it's worked. If you call any grower, they'll tell you it takes about six months to grow a tree from two to two and a half inch caliper, okay? When it gets to two and a half, they have to make a decision. Do we take it out of the 30-gallon pot and move it into the 45-gallon pot, in which case, then the cost goes up? So, yeah, we don't control the marketplace, but your ordinance will dictate to the market that isn't currently growing two and a half inch, 30-gallon trees. It's growing two-inch, 30-gallon trees, and they grow just enough to sell as quickly as they can, okay? So pass it the way it is, we might not be able to buy these trees. Thank you.
Let me ask staff a question. Christina, let me ask you, has a cost analysis been done based on the change in this ordinance?
In terms of additional staff that might need to be utilized?
Have we, do we have a cost analysis prepared by staff?
I, I am not aware of a cost analysis that has been done on it. I, I know that there is an open position that natural resources has, that they are hoping to add someone above what they already have, and that position is already approved.
Is, but that is based on one person? They've got one position, correct?
That is, that is one position they are adding, yes.
All right. Do, do you agree to what we just seen on the screen, talking about 10 position, full-time position?
I, I think that might be a little bit better for Ms. Beck to try to answer, since it's her department.
Good morning, Kathy Beck. With all due respect, the numbers that Mr. Brown just presented you are a little skewed in that the analysis that he's referencing, the 9 million trees, when that analysis was done, those trees are measured at one inch diameter. And so we're measuring, and the majority of those are mangrove, red mangrove. So it doesn't represent the, the population of trees that we would be regulating. But to answer your question, we have not done a cost analysis, and we're looking at strategies to provide an affidavit for pruning trees that should offset the inspection requirement.
Well, well, let me suggest that-
Yes, sir.
A cost analysis be done within this six-month period that we're talking about. We're coming back to review this in six months. I, I think we need to have a cost analysis prepared for the next-
Certainly.
-six months, to determine, is this feasible? How much is costing the city?
Sure.
And is, whether it's beneficial to, to the city based on the cost. I don't know, whether it has to be a motion, or just a request?
Well, I think, why don't we, when we get ready to take action, sort of fold up all these things into one additional motion.
All right, that'd be fine.
Mr. Fetterman, ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Chairman. Two questions, one for you. You just stated that the count was, most of them were red mangrove.
Yes, ma'am.
Do they not add to the, to the-
The canopy? Absolutely, absolutely. But they're not under our jurisdiction.
Because I asked that question a long, long time ago. If it's green and it has a leaf?
Yes, ma'am. It contributes quite a bit.
So what is, what is your problem with that?
There's-
When you said it's skewed?
We do not regulate red mangrove for pruning, and they don't get to be the size, they're under the jurisdiction of-
Okay, thank you.
-other agencies.
Now, something for legal, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Much appreciated. Where does she go? Legal, Ms. I quit. Okay, let me ask you, just since you were up, so I thought I'd ask then, two, one of the things that's really bothering me is that the private property part, which was stated that if those three words were removed, it would not affect the timeline that we're looking at. Do, what, what are we talking about?
Are you speaking regarding the, the pruning of the specimen trees?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So, what's, what's an issue, as, as I understand it, is that at present, at present, the city requires a pruning permit for grand tree limbs and protected tree limbs greater than four inches over city property or right-of-way. The, the issue that has been brought up is the specimen tree limbs of greater than four inches over private property. If city council wanted to remove it, that is a change I believe we can make here at second reading and still get this read today.
Thank you, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you very much.
All right, next speaker.
Good morning, Council. My name is Joe Chalura. I have the infamous reputation of having written the tree law in 1972, and some of these same questions, believe it or not, came up during those times. Incidentally, Charlie Miranda was on the board at that time, he's a lot older than I am. And I just want to make sure that the record's straight on that, but I have made myself available to Tree Something Say Something group that Chelsea Johnson behind me heads up, and they've done an outstanding job of improving an ordinance that was in a very embryonic stage back in those days in 19, excuse me, in 1972. We had a difficult time passing it, and we finally passed it. I think all the comments that have been made are certainly legitimate, but I want to wholeheartedly endorse the changes that they have made, and urge you to support this second reading. And any amendments that you bring up that I heard, that were in discussion, certainly aren't anything that are going to devastate the ordinance. But it's, it's held up since 72. Frankly, I'm proud of it, and I would hope that you continue to give it your, your whole hearted support.
Good evening, good morning, Council. This is Jerry Frankhauser of Thanh President, and I want to thank you very much for putting up with us with this tree ordinance for the last three years. Thanh has been working on the tree ordinance since, for as long as we've been in existence, 30 years now, we've always been for trees, and thank you very much for all the work you've
Good morning, Council. My name's Lorraine Perrino, I'm with the Davis Island Civic Association Tree Protection and Restoration Committee. This rewritten tree ordinance has the endorsement of the Davis Island Civic Association, the Davis Island Garden Club, and other garden clubs in the city of Tampa. This rewritten tree ordinance has taken 13 long months to negotiate, in concert with the civic associations, the Tampa Bay Builders Association, the tree advocates, and city staff. It has been a long, arduous process of meetings, negotiations, and compromise involving hundreds of hours between these entities. The tree ordinance rewrite will protect Tampa's urban forests for decades to come. It has already been negotiated and agreed upon, and Tampa City Council needs to vote to pass it today. It will forever be to your credit, as this city council's outgoing legacy.
Good morning. Chelsea Johnson, 3313 Home Court in Tampa. Thank you all, I'm going to miss those of you that are leaving, and we appreciate all of the time that you spent listening to us the past, for me, the past year, for some of you have been hearing about this for longer than that. I don't think that the spirit of collaboration can be overstated today. I understand that we're talking about a half-inch difference, which is extremely important, and also whether we are allowed to prune trees on our property. But today is a nearly 40-year, it's a historical compromise between the Tampa Bay Builders Association and the builders, I don't know how long they've been around, the TBBA, the tree advocates, we have members from the Sierra Club, we have citizen activists, we have neighborhood association presidents and volunteers and civic associations. We also have the Greater Tampa Area Realtors and the builders here, mostly to support this code. We are talking about a couple of, of things that we just weren't able to agree on, I think we've discussed that, we've had city staff come up and, and give their expertise. But again, the spirit of collaboration over the past year just cannot be overstated today. I do request that we have a six-month review after the implementation of this code today, assuming that you all will pass it. I also think it's important to err on the side of caution. We do have to preserve our trees while allowing for growth, and if we cannot preserve them, we must be replacing the canopy to the best of our ability. It's important to do our best, to do this to the best of our ability. There are things that we aren't going to be able to control. Possibly two, two-inch trees are all that are available, I don't know, we can review that in six months. But we should always try for our best. There's no question that the city is behind when it comes to enforcement. However, our priceless trees deserve at least the very best protections that we can give them to the best of our ability. There are already things that you're not allowed to do on your own private property. Why should trees get, so to speak, the short end of the stick? Thank you for your time. I want to thank the builders, city staff, and the tree advocates for the many, many, many hours of collaboration. Just as a side note, I have been speaking at neighborhood associations, and I spoke at Thanh recently. There are no objections to this code as it stands. Thank you again.
Okay. Very quickly here, I tend to agree that the, the size, when you're looking at 30-gallon, I, there's not anything there that I could, that I would be willing to change. However, the private property, it's not so much the private property as looking at people that cannot afford, cannot afford, and will not afford. They are looking at between paying their rent or buying food and paying for a permit to trim a tree. That's not going to happen. It's just not going to happen. And the neigh, and we have many, many neighborhoods like that. So that part of it, for that reason, that, and only that reason, I am concerned about, because I live in an area of West Tampa that I know most of those people would not, would not be able to afford it. And it, it's a choice. So they will either illegally do it, and then they'll be fined, which we will never collect, because they don't have the money. So that part of it, you know, I would move forward, and since it is not something that would jeopardize moving forward, I would like to see that, those three words removed, and not in six months now. And then in six months, if they see that there's an issue that needs to be put back in, then put it back in. That's my thoughts on it.
All right, any more comments running public? All right, Council, you've got anything, finally, you need to say?
No, nothing further, Council, just if you, if you would like to direct some changes to this ordinance, then please direct me to do so by motion, and I can run upstairs, make those changes, and then return it for second reading if you have changes.
All right, we'll have a discussion and decide what Council wants, wishes to do. But this next Thursday, with that being our last day on this council, we won't be talking trees.
That's right, we will not be talking trees.
All right. So let's, let's open for the council, any council member, in a good discussion, anything you want to say.
Mr. Chairman, oh, I support this, entitle them, as long as it's, there's got to be some, you know, we have different funds for different things, like roof repairs sometimes, and, and a small amount of money, I understand, there's a lot of roofs that need repairing. But somewhere, somehow, I'm concerned with Ms. Kapine said regarding the individual who may or may not have the money. As you well know, over 40% of Americans don't have enough for a $400 emergency. Over 60% of Americans don't have enough for a $1,000 emergency. So I'm not saying this is an emergency, but it's a necessity to balance the nature causes that we should be addressing. But how do we handle individuals that don't have the money to pay for something that has to be done? Is there an answer to that?
I, I don't believe that we do.
And thinking what we know, that there's 3.2 billion of another thing that needs to be addressed, underground lines, about tushery treated water and drinking water, that's a biggie, that hasn't been discussed. And- water, that's a biggie, that hasn't been discussed. And, and I just don't want to pout on somebody that's trying to get out and have a better life with their family, immediately start pushing them down. And I'm not saying I'm pushing them down, but it's not helping them. So, how do I balance that out? The problem is, I don't have an answer. Although I'll support it, I'm gonna review it in six months and see where the areas are, and see how much... What are you gonna, ticket the people? What are you gonna do with them? You're gonna give them a ticket? And then what? They gotta go to court? I don't know. I don't know what you're all gonna do.
It's typically handled through the code enforcement process.
Yeah, what does it end up?
If it's resolved at code enforcement, then it's resolved there, otherwise they, they could take it to court.
And the problem is that we may have the ability to get an attorney, they don't. Do we furnish them an attorney? I don't know, I don't think so. It's, it's complex, it's very simple, I like, I'm not against trees, but I like to help the public to have any different keel. So if there's some money somewhere that you can tell us where it's at, and I don't know of any, maybe we can say, you know what, maybe under the ship program, I don't know. That's all.
Do, do we need to close the public hearing?
No, I think we have to talk during it, yeah.
Okay, okay, um, who, who next?
I guess, I guess this is me, Chair, yes. You know, the way I look at it, I, I totally agree with Mr. Miranda and Ms. Kapine's, uh, uh, concerns about, uh, the specifics. It is incumbent upon yourself, Mr. Viera, Mr. Maniscalco, uh, whoever else gets elected to this, thanks, to deal with those issues. We have, as a council, over the last eight years, been good stewards of our money, and, uh, the mayor has crowed about the fact that there, uh, is going to be a good budget year this year. Maybe there's a, a solution based on that. When you're talking about ordinances, and you're talking about a large portion of this, I mean, when you look at whoever's going to read this, it's a one whole page, we don't usually see that as the title, that's the title, that's not the ordinance itself. So, we have been working diligently with our neighborhood advocates and our tree advocates, with the Tampa Bay Builders Association, with everyone else that has an interest in making sure that the tree ordinance is not only fair, but is protecting the main thing that we talked, started this discussion about, which is the canopy itself. It isn't only about the specifics of it, it is also about the overarching reason why we're doing it. Trees bring a lot more benefit than just oxygen. They make neighborhoods complete. It is not only the families and the, uh, and the businesses that are in these neighborhoods, it's also the ambiance of what a tree brings to a neighborhood, and I think that that's extremely important. In terms of some of the specifics, I think that the next council, I think, will do a good job in terms of trying to figure it out, especially because we're gonna have three members that have gone through this whole process, and I know that they're gonna be very diligent of making sure that it is applied fairly, and have some recourse for folks that might not have the money to provide some of the tree trimming, uh, and I think that that's going to be the answer. I'm wholeheartedly in support of this. I want to thank all the advocates on both sides for coming together and actually coming up with something that made sense for all of us. It was a mind-numbingly awful process before, uh, the groups got together and made a decision as to how they were gonna put this, uh, uh, forward. Thank you to the staff, and Ms. Beck, I know that you're gonna be leaving, uh, soon, you're gonna be retiring, and, uh, I hope you go to a tree farm somewhere, because I, I, you know, if you, if you end up in a place where it's all concrete, I'm not sure what's happening, but, uh, we hope you do that, and thank you so much to the legal department, Ms. Moore, who actually was, uh, the lead on this, uh, there were a lot of, uh, different issues. Thank you all for, uh, for persevering, uh, in terms of this, and thanks for everyone being here today to see the, hopefully, the final, uh, resolution of this before we leave council. Thank you.
Mr. Cohen.
Thank you very much. Um, you know, I think it is the responsibility of every council that gets a four-year lease from the citizens to tackle some of the big issues, and, uh, we have done that with stormwater, we have done it with the sign code, we've done it with different things, and this tree ordinance definitely is an example of that. And so I just want to commend everyone that worked on it for all of your hard work, and also the council. And I, I agree with Councilman Suarez that it really is gonna be incumbent on the three remaining council members that were here for this to pick up the ball in six months, 'cause it does sound like there is a consensus for a six-month review once this ordinance passes, and I, I want to assure you, I'm definitely gonna vote for it and be in favor of it. We have one issue left. The issue is whether or not a four-inch diameter limb of a non-grand tree can be pruned with or without a permit. And it seems to me that Ms. Beck already led us in the direction of a compromise with what she mentioned regarding her idea with the affidavit. So however you craft, however you want to craft this, whether you want to remove or, or keep the language, whatever, it seems to me that the first question that the next council has to ask at their six-month review is gonna have to write, come back to this issue, because this was the last thing that we got on the front. Um, but either way, whatever we end up doing with this, uh, the ordinance itself, I think, is a tremendous achievement, a tremendous compromise, and regardless of what happens on the pruning issue, uh, you'll come back in six months, we'll see how it's working, whatever we decide, and, uh, and we'll go from there. I think that the affidavit in lieu of an inspection, the idea that someone who is licensed can certify to something having been done correctly is the avenue that we ought to go down, because that will, uh, cut the cost, which is, I think, what Councilwoman Kapine and Miranda were, were expressing concern about, making it easier and making it less expensive and onerous.
All right, Ms. Kapine.
Yes. You know, we're talking about years, every time this came up, I brought it up, every single time, about the neighborhoods that cannot afford it, will not do it, and we're gonna find them, and we're not gonna collect. We're talking about trimming four-inch, where they would have their husband get up, or their son, or themselves get up on a ladder, I've seen my sister do that. And now we're telling them they have to hire an arborist. Really? It's not, it is not, it isn't fair. It is not a fair, it is not, it is unfair. It's okay to the people who can afford it, it is not okay to the people that can't afford it, and there's a whole lot of people that can't afford it. They can't afford an arborist, they can't afford, it's not gonna happen. We can put it in there. So, uh, my point is this, remove the words "in six months," add them, if you think that it needs to be added, not the other way around. We have to caution on the side of the people, and the people, there's many, many, many people in this city that cannot afford an arborist, cannot afford any of that. That's why trees, you find them, I mean, in my old neighborhood, a tree fell on a house because it was rotted and they couldn't, they didn't get the permit, and they couldn't get the permit, and they couldn't pay the, to take the tree down. And I asked, what do we do with, with, we don't do anything, we don't do anything on private property that are rotted trees, but we will go on private property and tell them how to trim a four-inch branch. I asked that question about, yes, I did, I asked that question to Ms. Coyle. I said, when we, when there are, uh, dangerous trees on private property, do we go in? And she said, no, we don't do anything on private property. That was her answer, and we can look up the, we can look up the statement. But here's the point, we're not, and if you go on private property, are we paying for the tree to get down? I mean, it's really, we're looking at planting trees and not paying attention to the, uh, not planting trees, trimming trees, not paying attention to the cost to the people. We have, we have piled on the people already, with, we have three taxes, three tax increases, and now we're gonna pile on them, I, I can't do this, I cannot, I mean, let's, let's look at it in six months, and if, if it needs to be added, add it. Right now, it's just not, it's not fair. Um, yes, ma'am?
Yes, I'm sorry, um, Councilwoman Kapine, I want to let you know, we do actively take a role...
State your name for the record.
Pardon me?
State your name for the record.
I'm sorry, Kathy Beck, Natural Resources Coordinator. We do take an active role in dangerous trees on private property. We have the ability to condemn them through the code enforcement process, and we've got a substantial backlog of, um, dangerous trees throughout the city that, um, are condemned, and they're required to remove them before they become, fall on homes or neighbors' properties. And we also work with individuals with pruning violations. The consequences of pruning trees improperly, um, are pretty substantial. They create dangerous trees, and, and I think we heard testimony today that, um, during high winds or storm events, that dead trees or, or dangerous trees fell and kept power out for three days. That's the, the, that's what happens when you don't prune trees properly. They don't respond well, and they become dangerous. So we try to educate people on the proper ways to prune trees, and we work with individuals that have pruned them improperly to get them pruned correctly, so they don't become dangerous. So it's really an educational process for us also.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any limb of specimen tree that is located within, on or over, any public right-of-way or private property, which limb measures four inches or greater in diameter, as measured twelve inches from the base of the limb, and any limb protected, okay, that's, that's number two. So, that is, that's not gonna, that is not going to make a difference, that is not going, but it will make a difference in people's, in people's lives. And to condemn trees and then not help them, when we do help them with their roof, we'll help them with different things, but we're not with a tree. So the tree sits there until it falls. So we're going around condemning, we have a backlog of condemned trees. It's, it's just not fair, it just isn't fair, and I, I think this, the whole kit and caboodle, if you want to call it, is excellent. Everybody worked very hard, and I, and I want to point out that builders understand trees are, add enormous value to property, they add value to property, they don't take, definitely, so to insinuate that builders don't like trees is ridiculous, in my estimation. So, that being said, I, I'm, in those, I think I would, I would vote for it if it was removed, and in six months, if they think they need to put it back, they put it back. But I think it's onerous on people to do that.
All right, do, do we have any hardship provisions for, uh, senior citizen?
I, I, I'm not aware of one standing here today.
So someone on fixed income, and they get cited, they gonna have to pay, this is...
I, I'm standing here today, I'm, I'm not aware of one, there are, are some complications the way that the statute regulates how we do fees, um, so it's something we would have to take a look at.
All right, so, um, that's something that we need to consider, uh, a hardship provision for senior citizen, uh, they shouldn't be, they are already on fixed income, they shouldn't be burdened with these, uh, high costs. So that's something we take into consideration. All right, uh...
Sir, my point was this, it was indicated that this has been worked on three weeks, and now, all of a sudden, this came up. This didn't all of a sudden come up, I have been questioning this for, every time it comes up, about people not being able to afford it. So it's not new, and here it is, it's still there. So, that part of it is not something I will support, I just can't support burdening people when we have raised taxes three times.
All right, can we get a motion called up here?
So, second...
All right, got a motion from, from, from Mrs. Suarez, second about Mr. Maniscalco, or in favor of that motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right, uh, Mr. Maniscalco, let you read the substitute law.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, I have a substitute ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance of the city of Tampa, Florida relating to comprehensive changes to the city's tree and landscaping regulations set forth in chapter thirteen, landscaping, tree removal, and site clearing, sixteen, parks and recreation, nineteen, property maintenance and structural standards, twenty-two, streets and sidewalks, and twenty-seven, zoning and land development, repealing and reserving chapter thirteen, landscaping, tree removal, and site clearing, amending section sixteen dash eighty-six, tree trust fund established, amending section nineteen dash three, definitions, amending section nineteen dash fifty-eight, unlawful to allow a dangerous tree to remain on property, amending section twenty-two dash five, definitions, amending section twenty-two dash two-two-three, administrative authority, amending section twenty-two dash three-two-three dot six, point six, trees within or proximate to public rights of way, amending section twenty-seven dash seven, area of coverage of chapter, creating section twenty-seven dash twenty, planning districts, amending section twenty-seven dash forty-three, definitions, amending section twenty-seven dash fifty-one, establishment of administrative officers, amending section twenty-seven dash fifty-eight, fees, amending section twenty-two, twenty-seven dash sixty, alternative designed exception, amending section twenty-seven dash sixty-one, review, amending section twenty-seven dash seventy-nine, powers and duties, amending section twenty-seven dash eighty-one, administration notice, public hearing decision, amending section twenty-seven dash ninety-six, variance, authority, application, notice, criteria, decision, stay, denial, review, expiration of variance, amending section twenty-seven dash one-one-four, variance, authority, application, public notice, criteria, decision, stay, denial, review, expiration of variance, amending section twenty-seven dash one-thirty-two, regulations governing individual special uses, amending section twenty-seven dash one-thirty-nine, general requirements, amending section twenty-seven dash one-forty-seven, amending initiation, amending section twenty-seven dash one-forty-eight, procedure for amendment application, amending section twenty-seven dash one-fifty-one, comprehensive review of land development code, amending section twenty-seven dash one-fifty-six, official schedule of district regu, regulations, amending section twenty-seven dash one-seventy-seven, historic district established, amending section twenty-seven dash one-seventy-eight, alternative parking requirements, amending section twenty-seven dash one-eighty-five point one, off-street surface parking design standards, amending section twenty-seven dash one-ninety-eight, official schedule of permitted principal accessory and land uses, amending section twenty-seven dash two-eleven dot one-three, landscaping, amending section twenty-seven dash two-one-two point six, landscaping, tree planting, screening, amending section twenty-seven dash two-eighty-three point one-three, special event parking lots, interim parking lots, and residential parking for stadium events, repealing and replacing section twenty-seven dash two-eighty-four, title, purpose and applicability, periodic study of Tampa's urban forests, creating section twenty-seven dash two-eighty-four point one, administrative authority, definitions, general procedures, fees, creating section twenty-seven dash two-eighty-four point one point one, city tree matrix, technical standards, authority to establish, publish, and adopt, creating section twenty-seven dash two-eighty-four point one point two, trees protected, grand and exempt trees, measurement methods, creating section twenty-seven dash two-eighty-four point one point three, other exemptions, creating sections twenty-seven dash two-eighty-four point one point four, non-conforming landscape areas due to government acquisition, section twenty-seven dash two-eighty-four point two, permits and general tree protection, page two. During construction inspections, creating twenty-seven dash two-eighty-four point two point one, permit for site clearing, application required documentation, inspections, creating section twenty-seven dash two-eighty-four point two point two, permit for landscaping and tree planting activities as part of a building permit, application required documents, inspections, creating section twenty-seven dash two-eighty-four point two point three, permit for tree pun, pruning, application, standards and criteria for decision, required documentations, inspections, creating section twenty-seven dash two-eighty-four point two point four, permit for protective tree removal, application required documentation, standards and criteria for decision, inspections, petition for review, creating section twenty-seven dash two-eighty-four point two point five, permit for grand tree removal, application required documentation, standards and criteria for decision, inspections, petition for review, creating section two, twenty-seven dash two-eighty-four point two point six, tree planting permit, procedures, requirements, inspections, creating section twenty-seven dash two-eighty-four point two point seven, emergency work, creating section twenty-seven dash two-eighty-four point three, tree preservation, planning, landscape area requirements, creating section twenty-seven dash two-eighty-four point three point one, landscape and tree planting standards, tree preservation, retention standards, creating section twenty-seven dash two-eighty-four point three point two, tree planting requirements, tree matrix irrigation, creating section twenty-seven dash two-eighty-four point three point three, landscape area and tree planting requirements, creating section twenty-seven dash two-eighty-four point three point four, landscape area and lieu calculation and payment general procedure, creating section twenty-seven dash two-eighty-four point four, tree mitigation method requirements, creating section twenty-seven dash two-eighty-four point four point one, tree mitigation calculations, creating section twenty-seven dash two-eighty-four point four point two, tree planting permit for mitigation trees, repealing and replacement section twenty-seven dash two-eighty-five, enforcement authority penalties remedies, repealing section twenty-seven dash two-eighty-five point one, landscape and tree planting standards, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for... Providing for severability. Providing an effective date.
All right. We got a long motion from Mr. Maniscalco.
A short second.
A short second from Mr. Suarez. And further discussion.
Yes.
Was there clarification of the effective date being June first, which is what I believe the attorney had asked for?
That was our...
Not, if you could just maybe, just say that.
Yeah. Just come back and say effective date, June first, or something.
All right. So, effective June first, 2019.
Okay. All right. Ms. Capeen.
I apologize, because the only person that came up to talk about the people who can't afford it was one lady. Everybody else, and I looked out at the audience, were white, middle-class people. And I apologize that I did not make the motion to remove that. My apologies to you. That's all I have to say.
All right. Got a, got a motion from Mr. Maniscalco, second, second by Mr. Suarez. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And oppose?
Nay.
Oh, I made a real call, I forgot, it was so long. All right. Please recall your vote.
Motion carried with Capeen voting no and Viera absent.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a motion?
Yeah. Because I was gonna make one.
Oh, okay. Well, whoever wants to.
I believe Mr. Chalauris should buy lunch for everybody in the audience. Since he started back in the seventies.
All right. Ms. Corn. Do you, do you want me to go ahead and, and, or do you, do you want to make it? It's up to you.
Chris, what's your motion?
I was gonna make a motion, and I think that the interested parties may want to listen to this, that on October 24th, 9:00 a.m., that the city council in its workshop session hold a review of the tree ordinance after its first six months. And that it specifically receive a report from the staff on the overall effectiveness of the ordinance to date, that they specifically bring up the issue of the four-inch limb pruning, and whether or not an affidavit-type system has been able to be worked out to alleviate some of the hardship that would be required by the professional requirements that, that are gonna be in place for the first six months. And that, third, there be a discussion of whether or not is it appropriate or necessary to have a hardship criteria for both elderly and low-income or reduced-income citizens.
All right. Well, you made my motion.
Okay.
All right. So, we got a motion from Mr. Corn, second by Mr. Miranda. In the further discussion, the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And oppose? All right. And I'm gonna be watching it on TV now. Make sure y'all do that. All right. Go to item number fifty-seven.
Rebecca Kurt, Assistant City Attorney. I'm hearing item fifty-seven, which is a change to Chapter sixteen, Parks and Recreation. It's updating the address of the David M. Barksdale Community Center to reflect where it is actually located. Based upon your city council's recent changes to this ordinance, this will need to pass by five votes or more.
Any question from council? All right. Anyone in the public which should speak on item number fifty-seven?
Morris Massey, Hillward Henderson, 101. He's Kennedy Boulevard, Street 3700. Here on behalf of the University of Tampa, we'd like to have the address corrected, and we appreciate your support this morning. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else which should speak on item number fifty-seven?
Second.
All right. Got a motion from Mr. Suarez, second by Mr. Corn. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right. Ms. Kim, Ms. Capeen, item fifty-seven.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. File number E-2019 dash eight, Chapter sixteen. Ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption. An ordinance of the City of Tampa, Florida, making a revision to the City of Tampa Code of Ordinances, Chapter sixteen, Parks and Recreation. Amending Section sixteen dash ninety-one. List of dedicated parks. Repealing all ordinances, parts of ordinances in conflict therewith. Providing for severability. Providing for an effective date.
Second.
All right. Got a motion from Ms. Capeen, second by Mr. Suarez. Please recall your vote.
Motion carried unanimously with Miranda absent at vote and Viera absent.
Item number fifty-eight. Anyone here for item number fifty-eight?
Rebecca Kurt, Legal Department. Item fifty-eight is for second reading. It's a change to your Tampa Comprehensive Plan. I don't know if the applicant is here to address you, but it has been passed on first reading.
Okay. Anyone in the public which should speak on item number fifty-eight?
Second.
All right. Got a motion from Mr. Corn, second by Mr. Suarez. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
And oppose? Mr. Suarez.
Thank you, Chair. Presented ordinance for second reading and adoption. An ordinance amending the Tampa Comprehensive Plan, future land use element, future land use map, for the property located at 4801 North 22nd Street, from Community Commercial 35, C.C. 35, Community Mixed Use 35, C.M.U. 35, Residential 10, R. 10, Residential 35, R. 35, Residential 50, R. 50, Right-of-Way, and Transitional Use 24, T.U. 24, to public, semi-public, S/SP, providing for repeal of all ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Second.
Got a motion from Mr. Suarez, second by Mr. Maniscalco. Please recall your vote.
Motion carried unanimously with Viera being absent.
Chair, before we move forward, I will have to leave at this point. I have a pre, a doctor's appointment that I need to get to, so I won't be here for the rest of the session. So, I appreciate that.
I appreciate that. All right. If you're gonna speak on item fifty-nine through sixty-five, please stand up to be sworn. If you plan on speaking on item fifty-nine through sixty-five, please stand up to be sworn.
Do you sound this way or affirm the truth? The whole truth and nothing above the truth? Yes.
All right. Item number fifty-nine.
Mary Simoniego, Planning, Design, and Development Coordination. Items number fifty-nine and through sixty-five were heard for first reading at your March fourteenth hearing. They're all ready for second hearings, and I believe all my applicants are present. Do you have any questions? No. Thank you.
All right. Happy to put it down.
Roy Mezier, 4260 West Lineball Avenue, W.R.A. Engineering. Good morning. Happy Easter to all. We have made the changes as recommended by staff to the site plan. The plan and the project did receive, did receive 100% compliance from the staff review. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any question from council? Anyone in the public which should speak on item number fifty-nine?
Second.
All right. Got a motion from Mr. Corn, second by Mr. Miranda. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
And oppose? All right. Mr. Corn.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I move an ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption. An ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of 4707, 4713, and 4717 West McCoy Street in the City of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in Section One, from zoning district classification to P.D. plan development, retail and restaurant to P.D. plan development, residential, single-family attached, providing an effective date.
Second.
All right. Got a, got a motion from Mr. Corn, second by Ms. Capeen. Please recall your vote.
Motion carried with Maniscalco voting no and Suarez and Viera being absent.
Okay. Item number sixty. Anyone here for item number sixty?
Yes.
Good morning, Council. J.B. Brickelmeier, Joseph Brickelmeier Law, 3902 Henderson Boulevard. I think the matter in question for the council is what type of development do you want? An assisted living facility that's gonna provide enhancement to properties, increase employment, increase property values, or a multifamily development as it's currently zoned, which would house approximately the same number of residents with increased traffic and really no enhancement to the property? The, my client has been extremely cooperative with Neighborhood Association with two extensions to this process to cooperate and get their approval. And lastly, it's really a question the staff has found is totally consistent, and we ask for your approval. Any questions?
What are the Neighborhood Association?
Tampa Heights Civic Association.
Okay. All right. Anyone in the public which should speak on item number fifty-nine?
Sixty.
I missed. Item number sixty. Anyone in the public which should speak on item number sixty?
My name is Ralph Rivera, Vice President of Central Protection Services. Our office is at 5809 115 Drive East Parish, Florida 34219. Our company has over ten years' experience of both safety and security services. Our company's portfolio consists of residential properties such as, such as apartment complexes, homeowner associations, subdivisions, subdivisions, and commercial retail properties. Some of our security details have include conventions as well as public events. The developer, the developer and I have draft agreement and a pending contract with respect to Emily's project. As a developer, as a developer's priority is the safety and security of the residents and staff and overall property. Such security measures have been discussed to include camera systems, perimeter fencing, CCTVs, as well as property security checks and services. Visitors will be made to sign in and out to gain access to both the property as well as residents. The security plan is to ensure that the residents are safe and secure and not to make feel though they are in prison, as both developers and I's priority is to keep the residents safe. Central Protection Services offers, Central Protection Services officers are certified and trained in the area of patient compliance to meet all the, all ALF criteria. It has been brought to the, it's been brought to both the developer and Central Protection Services attention that there are some safety concerns in reference to the public park adjacent to the Emily, Emily project. Our presence will be a great benefit to the neighbors and the neighborhood and the neighbors as well as a confident, and we are confident that, that our presence of security such as the one we will be providing would deter and minimize any unwanted activity around the property and will most certainly keep residents as safe as can be.
Anyone else which should speak on item number sixty?
Good morning, Council. My name is McIntosh. I live at 512 East Emily. That is four houses away from this proposed location that they're looking to build. I do sit and view the park. It's right across from our residence. With this added security that's going to go in, and the fact that just, just on the other side of the baseball field is a community center, police substation, which is constantly full of patrol officers, the security down there will, will increase. It will be much better. The property has been neglected for a long period of time. It has been many, many things over the years, which I'm sure y'all are aware of. I approve this project based on the fact that it will provide, it will provide income for people in the neighborhood. It will provide security. It will provide benefits for the, for the veterans that are going to be in this facility. This is going to be a location that I would like to see go through. So, I appreciate your time this morning, and have a great day.
All right. Anyone else which should speak on item number sixty?
Good morning, City Council. My name is Charles Butler. I stay in 509 East Baker. I stay right around the corner from the, the park and the place where he trying to reopen the place. I, I stayed in the community for a while, and I really do think it'd be a good, you know, facelift for the East Tampa area, because it'll open up jobs, you know, and, you know, I know y'all often do a lot of new development in New Tampa, I mean, in East Tampa. So, I think that it really would be good, you know, for, you know, veterans and, you know, people in need. You know, I think that would be a real nice place for it to be. So...
Okay. Anyone else?
I don't know if it's morning or afternoon, but my name is Donna Craig, and I own and live at 512 East Emily Street, which, as recorded before, is about four or five houses from the two properties that are in question. And I support this project. I live on Robles Park. I moved there a little over five years ago. That section of the park has, has been a mess. And I think it would be good to have a stronghold on this park. I live on the far northeast corner, and I think we need people in there that respect the park, that want to be in the park, that want to appreciate what the city has put in many, many years ago, and probably part of the landscape at some point early on. But I think this gentleman is, is full of heart and is willing to help out the community. He has the funds to do it, and I do not see why all of the confusion has evolved when we've actually got someone that's willing to help this project move along and, and make this Tampa Heights area much better. So, I approve it. Hope it goes through. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else?
Move to close. Second.
All right. Got a motion from Mr. Miranda, second by Mr. Maniscalco. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
And oppose? Mr. Miranda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. File number R.E.Z. eighteen dash 101. Ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption. An ordinance rezoning property in general vicinity of 414 and 418 East Emily Street in the City of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in Section One, from zoning district classification, R.M. sixteen, residential multifamily, to P.D. plan development, congregate living facility, group care facility, large, providing an effective date.
Second.
All right. Got a motion from Mr. Miranda, second by Mr. Corn. Please recall your vote.
Motion carried with Viera and Suarez being absent.
Okay. Item number sixty-one.
Hi, Diana Hamid, representing DKV Initiatives, on behalf of Doug Verkai and Lou To. Just following up on the previous hearing that was done on March 28th. There are no one else that is opposing to our law being rezoned as residential, so just following up on that.
Any question from council? Anyone in the public which should speak on item number sixty-two?
Move to close.
Got, got, got a, I mean, sixty-one. I had a motion from Mr. Miranda, second by Mr. Corn. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
And oppose? Mr. Corn?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move an ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption. An ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of 7113 South Kissimmee Street in the City of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in Section One, from zoning district classification, C.G., commercial general, to R.S. 50 residential, single-family, providing an effective date.
Second.
All right. Got a motion from Mr. Corn, second by Mr. Maniscalco. Please recall your vote.
Motion carries with Viera and Suarez being absent.
Okay. Item number sixty-two. Thank you, man.
Thank you.
Item number sixty-two.
Good morning. My name is Perry Sullivan. I live at 4211 River Hills Drive. I'm here. Have any questions on second reading? My project, I've done all the changes that staff has asked to my, just to my ability, and hoping you could give us a favorable decision.
All right. Any question from council? Anyone in the public which should speak on item number sixty-two?
Move to close. Second.
Got a motion from Mr. Miranda, second by Mr. Corn. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
And oppose? Mr. Maniscalco.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
I have an ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption. An ordinance re zoning property in the general vicinity of 7214 North 40th Street in the city of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in section one from zoning district classification RM 24 residential multifamily to PD planned development, personal services, and business professional office, providing an effective date.
Second.
All right, got a motion from Mr. Maniscalco, second by Mr. Cohen. Please we call your vote.
Motion carried unanimously with Viera and Suarez absent.
Okay, item number sixty-three.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, members of the council. My name is Gabriel Navajete. I live in 5114 South 66th Street here for the second motion. We're trying to rezone from RS 50 to PD this property because we're short 250 feet of the required five thousand square foot area for RS 50 zoning, so I'm here seeking that approval, so if you have any questions.
Any question from council? Anyone in the public which to speak on item number sixty-three?
Move to close.
Second.
We got a motion from Mr. Miranda, second by Mr. Maniscalco. All in favor, that motion say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. King?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
We, we ain't done yet.
But you can still thank us. RM 1908. An ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption. An ordinance re zoning property in the general vicinity of 3304 and 3306 West St. Joseph Street in the city of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in section one from zoning district classifications RS 50 to residential single family to PD planned development residential single family detached, providing an effective date.
Second.
All right, we got a motion from Mr. King, second by Mr. Maniscalco. Please we call your vote.
Motion carried unanimously with Viera and Suarez being absent.
Okay. Item number sixty-four.
Good morning, Council. Leighton Hyde for the applicant, 4100 West Kennedy Boulevard, Suite 213. Here to answer any questions you may have and respectfully request that you approve this ordinance.
Any question from council? Anyone in the public which to speak on item number sixty-four?
Move to close.
Second.
Got a motion from Mr. Miranda, second by Mr. Cohen. All in favor, that motion say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Miranda?
Thank you, Chair. Number sixty-four, file number REZ 19-12. Move an ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption. An ordinance re zoning property in general vicinity of 2807 North Boulevard and 518 West Plaza Place in the city of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in section ones from zoning district classification or residential office and RS 50 single residential single family deal RM 18 residential multifamily, providing an effective date.
Second.
Got a motion from Mr. Miranda, second by Mr. Cohen. Please we call your vote.
Motion carried unanimously with Viera and Suarez being absent and Kepine being absent at vote.
Item number sixty-five.
Good morning, Council. Morris Massey, Hobart Henderson, 101 East Kennedy Boulevard, Suite 3700, Tampa, Florida. Here on behalf of the University of Tampa. If you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
Any question from council?
Thank you.
Anyone in the public which to speak on item number sixty-five?
Move to close.
Second.
Got a motion from Miranda, second by Mr. Maniscalco. All in favor, that motion say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Cohen?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I move an ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption. An ordinance re zoning property in the general vicinity of 401 802 909 and 1005 West Kennedy Boulevard, 109 North Willow Avenue, and 112 and 115 North Edison Avenue in the city of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in section one from zoning district classification PDA, planned development alternative CG commercial general and IG industrial general to PDA planned development alternative college university private, providing an effective date.
Got a motion from-
Second.
Mr. Cohen, second by Mr. Miranda. Please we call your vote.
Motion carried unanimously with Kepine being absent at vote and Viera and Suarez being absent.
Okay, item number sixty-six.
Barbara Lynch, Land Development Coordination. This is a vacating request, BAC 1904. This is the second reading. I have here to answer questions and the applicant is here.
Okay, applicant?
How are you? Scott Gilner with Kimley Horned Associates, 655 North Franklin Street. Happy to answer any questions and we're okay with the substitute ordinance.
All right, any question from council? Anyone in the public which to speak on item number sixty-six?
Move to close.
Second.
Got a motion from Miranda, second by Mr. Cohen. All in favor, that motion say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Maniscalco?
Thank you very much. I have a substitute ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption. An ordinance vacating, closing, discontinuing, and abandoning right-of-way located northwest of the intersection of Burreyne Street and Jefferson Street in the city of Tampa, Hillsborough County, Florida, the same being more fully described in section one hereof, subject to certain covenants, conditions, and restrictions, more particularly set forth herein, providing an effective date.
Second.
All right, got a motion from Mr. Maniscalco, second by Mr. Cohen. Please we call your vote.
Motion carried unanimously with Kepine being absent at vote and Viera and Suarez being absent.
All right, we're going to our 10:30 public hearing. Anyone going to speak on items sixty-seven through seventy-one, please stand and be sworn. If you're going to speak on items sixty-seven through seventy-one, please stand and be sworn.
Do you sound swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and not the other truth?
Mr. Chair, I move to open items sixty-seven through seventy-one.
All right, got a motion from Mr. Cohen, second by Mr. Miranda. All in favor, that motion say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, item number sixty-seven.
If I may, if I may, just say that there's only four council members in the Republic are aware that they have to ask for a continuance if they so choose.
Okay.
You want to pick me?
You have to tell them.
Yes, Steve is going to ask for a continuance on BAC 1906 to May 16th.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We're respectfully requesting a continuance for thirty days. We're trying to work out the easement language with the city staff and we need time to finish that up.
This item sixty-seven?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thirty days would be, what date?
May 16th. At 10:30 a.m.
I sent a request in for a continuance, but I had the wrong vacating reference number on the email that you have, so for the record, it's BAC 1906.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, anyone in the public which to speak on item number sixty-seven being continued to May 16th?
Move to continue to May 16th at 10:30 a.m.
We got a motion from Mr. Cohen, second by Mr. Miranda. All in favor, that motion say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Okay. Item number sixty-eight.
Appears that sixty-eight is asking to be withdrawn.
Yes.
Move to withdraw from the agenda.
Okay, got a motion from Mr. Cohen, second by Mr. Miranda. All in favor, that motion say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number sixty-nine.
Barbara Lynch, Land Development Coordination. The city is the applicant on this application and we're requesting a continuance to 516 at 10:30 a.m.
I don't blame you. All right. Move to continue, Mr. Chairman, to May 16th, year 2019, at 10:30 a.m. Number sixty-nine.
Yeah, second?
Second.
All right, got a motion from Mr. Miranda, second by Mr. Cohen. All in favor, that motion say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number seven.
Rebecca Kurt, Assistant City Attorney. Item seven is a review hearing from a denial of a special use permit request. It was denied because it did not meet the specific special use criteria. City Council does have the ability to waive that criteria and I'm going to pass out sample motions for you.
I want to make sure that the petitioner knows there's only four council members.
I was going, wait till she come up and state that.
Want me to say it?
Yeah, you, you go ahead.
Good morning, Aracot Land Development Coordination. I have been sworn. Just so the applicant knows, there's only four council members available today. You need a unanimous vote to have a motion passed. I don't know if you want to ask the council, if they want to move forward or-
Yes, I, I, I think legal is talking. Ma'am, you understand what's going on?
Ah, yes, I agree with that.
All right, you need to come to the mic.
How you doing? My name is Dawn Raymond. I'm representing Karen P. Agaroff.
All right, you understand that there's four people sitting up there?
Yes.
Non-vse.
Yes.
All right, so do you want to move forward with this with four?
Yes, please.
Okay, so let's move forward.
Good morning again, Councilor, Aracot Land Development Coordination. This is a petition for review for SU 118-42 for a property at 2212 East McBarry Street. That request roughly a little bit in from McBarry and 22nd. It's a single-family home. This is the view of the property, the subject property from McBarry. This is adjacent on the west side and it's a single-family home on the east side and on the south side of McBarry, across the street is another commercial property. The applicant is seeking to open a congregate care facility. The congregate care facility itself, the maximum size in the zoning of an RS 50 zoning district is eight beds. They're asking for a total of nineteen. That's the waiver they're asking for. This is the proposed site plan. There are some changes that need to be made if this is approved and they go through the permitting process.
I'm sorry, how many did you say is the normal number allowed?
The maximum allowed for a congregate care facility in the RS 50 district is eight.
Eight?
Yes.
And they're asking for nineteen?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
This is a, a draft site plan that still needs to go through permitting and meet all the permitting requirements for the building department, transportation, East Hampton and such, but the, the request before you today is the, is the waiver from the eight space, eight number, people of eight beds to a total of nineteen beds. Do you, do y'all have any questions?
Questions?
Yep, no?
And, 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 and I guess in-
Yes, sir.
In the vicinity area, are there any other facility like this in, within certain radius?
No, sir, the distance separation is twelve hundred, twelve hundred linear feet and they have not asked for that waiver, so per OCA requirements, when they do that, we do our search for us, there is none within twelve hundred feet.
Okay.
I just need an expert, if I may, Mr. Chair. The reason for eight in a residential area, I guess because it doesn't change the conformity of a structure, I would imagine is one of-
Well, I think the limit for the eight is, it's still more or less a single-family feel.
Right, and what I'm seeing here now is an addition in the back, which even though you're not changing the land use, would imply that there is a land use change without being, changing the, the property commercial. And I understand what I just, what the chairman just said about the vicinity of it and there's commercial on one side. How many residential homes are there on that block?
The block itself is not overly developed. This is the commercial property, this is the subject property, and there's one, two, three, four, five, five additional single-family homes on the same block face.
Thank you.
All right, petitioner? Tell us what you want to do and why you want to do it.
We would like to increase, right now it's currently licensed, the ALF is currently licensed for six. We're looking to expand. It has been there since 2012 with spot, a spotless record. It's not very developed, that area, even behind us is an empty lot that's been empty for years, so I, I do think that it would benefit the community. We, we are fenced, we have, we've recently installed cameras and I think that it's, it allows more affordable care i- in that neighborhood that does not have it now.
Let me ask you, what was the primary reason for the zoning administrator turning down your request down?
I'm sorry?
Can I, can I ask staff? What was the primary reason for the zoning administrator turning this request down?
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I didn't catch you.
The primary reason for the zoning administrator-
Oh, for the denial?
Yeah, for the denial.
Um, per this, per 27132, which is a special use criteria, if you don't meet those criteria, which would be the maximum of eight, administratively, we have to deny the request. Then they have the right to come before council and ask for the waiver.
All right, and, and one final question for the petitioner. You, you saying you, you, you licensed for six?
Right now, it's currently licensed for six.
Would you want to move up to nineteen?
Absolutely, yes.
Have you gotten a license for those additional, uh, uh-
N- n- no.
Spaces that you requested?
No, we had recently acquired, so the way that it was structured before, they, you can only get in six residents, so right now, after making some changes, we would be able to make it up to the eight and then expand on to the back to continue to grow.
All right, what guarantee you have that you can get up to nineteen? You going to be licensed for nineteen?
What guarantee do we have? Well, it's been-
Because you're saying you're going from six to eight and, but you-
We, we did not because we, we're not zoned for it currently. We're not licensed through OCA for eight. We were, it was only licensed for six, but since it's been in operations in 2012, it's been at a hundred percent capacity and there are nonstop calls for additional beds.
What is your capacity level?
Right now, it's six.
Six, right, that's what I felt.
Yes.
And, 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 and you, but you don't have no guarantee that you going to be able to get licensed for nineteen?
As far as licensing goes and OCA goes, absolutely. We had already had conversation with them, but they can't license us a facility until it's there. Then they have to inspect it and say yea or nay. So, they, they, right now, we don't have, we're not in the position to ask OCA to get licensed for nineteen because zoning is, the current zoning is only for eight, so we, we can't go to OCA until we get the correct zoning.
All right, Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, let me ask you this. You're asking us to over, more than double the si, allow you to more than double the size of your operation in a residential neighborhood? Why should we allow you to do that when our code says that the most that can be there are eight beds?
That neighborhood is, I, I do understand on paper it does say residential, but as you can see from the pictures, there are four homes in addition to ours, that makes five homes on this block. In the short amount of time that we have been there, we're seeing the empty lot across the street. We see what appears to be like a warehouse right next door to us, the empty lot behind us. The, the neighbors, the few neighbors that are on the block, we have spoken to them and they are absolutely in support of this change.
You have any official letter of support from them, those neighbors?
I, I, I don't, sir.
Okay.
Is there anyone here that, that's speaking against it or for it or anything?
Okay. Anything else you want to say?
No, sir.
Okay, anyone in the public which to speak on item number seventy? Okay.
Move to close.
Second.
All right, we got a motion from Mr. Cohen, second by Mr. Maniscalco. All in favor, that motion say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, pleasure, Council.
Chairman, I move to uphold the zoning administrator's denial of the special use permit application as SU 1-18-42 because petitioner has failed to demonstrate the petition, if the waiver is granted, is consistent with the applicable vote. General standard set forth in section 27 129, section 27-61B and 27-127B 2.
Second.
Any other facts, situation, or feel appropriate?
All right, got a motion from Mr. Miranda, second by Mr. Maniscalco. All in favor, that motion say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
All right. We'll go to item number seventy-one.
Aracot Land Development Coordination?
Rebecca Kurt, Legal Department. This is also a review petition from a denial of a special use permit application. The property, the property owner is seeking review. It was also denied because it meant the specific, it did not meet the specific criteria in the code, which City Council has the ability to waive, and I am going to pass out sample motions.
Aracot Land Development Coordination. I have been sworn. This is a petition for review for SU 119-16 for a property at 3426 East Lambright Street. Their map, the, this again is denied by the zoning administrator. This instance is they're asking for a total of eight beds, which they could do in the RS 50 zoning district, but in per code, there's a separation distance of twelve hundred feet. They're asking for reduction between this property, which is the subject property, and this property, according to the OCA webpage, this is at 3501 East Knollwood Street, the distance separating, the distance is only three hundred sixteen feet. They would be asking for that waiver.
Any question from council?
Chairman, I just want to say this for, for everybody's benefit. I have voted consistently against this. I can tell you where, on Tampa Bay Boulevard in Havana and on the one behind Jesuit High School, that was one that came up about seven, eight months ago, and I don't want the petitioner to feel in any way disrespected, and I'm, I'm just telling ahead that I will be supporting it because now there's only four council members. I want you to understand that it's not because of any reason other than to follow the guideline of the twelve hundred feet.
All right, given that Mr. Miranda said that, I think it's very important that the petitioner understand what the limitation is of having four council members up here.
And that's what I was waiting for.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Given it is due. Sir, sir, we, we okay? Anything else you want to say?
No, sir, except I'll just reiterate what I said at the beginning, at the, at the other hearing is to get this, to get counsel.
Yeah, we, we get ready to make that known to the petitioner.
You need to have- You need to have a total of four people.
Yeah, yeah, we're going to make that known to the petition. Ma'am, you the petitioner?
Yes.
All right. As we stated, in, in, with the previous case we just had, there's four members up here. We normally have seven. Now, you have a choice where you can continue this, because we don't have, we, we don't have a four here, instead of a full body, or you can go forward, and take your chances with the four of them that are present.
If I, if I can add to that, Mr. Chairman, for the purpose of the record, you are allowed as a matter of right, because you have to have a unanimous vote, and you've had indications, and you've had indications that you may not get a unanimous vote today.
Well, you got one more just arrived, so you got five now.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, and you have five now, so if it's, if it's still a request that you want, you have the right to make that request, council doesn't have to gr- give it. With only four, with a unanimous vote, council would give you that requi- uh, that, uh, continuance if you ask for it. So what is your pleasure? Please let, uh, council know what, what you wish to do.
I wish to continue.
State your name for the record.
My name is Catherine McQuill, I'm a Medicare waiver provider. Previously, I applied for a permit to open a small residential facility, and I was denied just because of the fact that I didn't meet the criteria, because there was another group home, which was on the other side of the street. But I spoke with some of the people over there, and the reason is, the, the other category of the person running the facility is ALF, and the ALF deal with a different criteria from what we do. The other one is ALF Assistant Living Facility, that deals with the elderly. But my facility is going to be dealing with individual, young individual with developmental disabilities, which actually need a place to stay, and that was the main reason why I decided to use that facility to run that group home, because it is totally different from what the other person is actually doing.
What are the age of those individuals that will be living at that facility?
Say that again, one more time?
What is the age? You say you, it sound like you said you.
Yes, I, I work with McQuill Health Care Services, it's my business, and I contract with agency for person with disability. So, we work with individual with developmental disability and behavioral disorder. As such, I decided to open a group home in that area, knowing fully well that there was another facility adjacent to where I am. But the only difference between the ALF and the group home is that the ALF that is around that area is dealing with elderly folks from seventy years and above, but I'm dealing with children and young adult with developmental disability, that needs a place to stay, to give at least some kind of leverage from their parents, at least to be able to go to work, knowing fully well that they have a child that is being taken care of in a facility.
I, I, I don't think, you heard my question. My question was, what is the age range of these?
Twelve to seventeen.
Twelve to seventeen?
Yes.
What is the capacity level are you looking at? How many people?
Eight.
Eight, just eight people?
Yes, that's all.
Uh, 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 um, okay, a- and why did you se- what was your reason for selecting this location?
When I choose that location, actually, I didn't know that there was another facility there, that deal with the, uh, uh, agency for, I think they deal with ACHA, but I deal with APD. And I, when that guy called me, because he called me himself, and asked me what type of business I'm going to do, the what type of group home, I told him that I would be dealing with children and young adults. He said, "Oh, I don't have any problem, because I'm dealing only with the elderly folks, so we don't deal with the same, we don't have the same category of clients to work together."
Have, have you met with any of the residents in the vicinity of this, this location that you want to put this group home?
Yes, I've talked with the manager, he called me actually three times.
I say residents.
In that area.
Yeah, people that own homes and property in that vicinity.
Yes, I spoke with a couple of them that are around my area, and I discussed with them, because they saw the development that I was doing there, I was fixing the place, putting fences, and all other things that are going to make the land very beautiful, and they can even see the, the type of work I've done in that area, and all, most of them, the ones that I know appreciate what I've done in that area. So, they didn't have any problem with me, at least they would have approached me. But the guy in concern, who said that he's running the ALF program, called me and told me that I have no problem with it, because most of them called me when they go, when I sent out the letter notifying them what is going on in the place, in the facility, what will be taking place in the facility.
Let's go on. Yeah, I, I just want to get back to the threshold question for a minute, because we only have five, we, even with just five council members present, you have a right to ask for a continuance if you want a council of seven. You have to get four votes, regardless of whether there's five people here, or seven people here. So, it's important, I think, before we go any further, you would have originally said you wanted to continue when there were four, now there's five, but we still need to settle that, I think, before we go forward anymore.
I understood you to continue, but I didn't understand if she meant to continue the hearing.
Right, right, we need to clarify it, right.
I, I, I agree with you there.
What is your choice?
If I decide to change my mind, where would that open? Where would we next hear?
No, it would just be to postpone the hearing until there's seven council members up here, not, it, it wouldn't resolve itself today.
Because you need four votes, whether there's five, or four, or seven.
Okay.
For it to pass.
And, and, and keep in mind, um, this would, if you decide to continue this, another day, it, it probably going to be a month or two, by this being continued, and you're going to have four new members up here, new council member. So, so all that, you need to weigh, you take that into consideration. You're going to have, we, four of us ain't going to be sitting up here. And, 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 um, you're going to have four new ones. So, I want to make sure you know everything, and clear with everything, for, uh, when you make a decision. Waiting on you.
Okay. I'll wait.
You, you, you want to continue?
I'll continue.
Okay, well, then, um, why don't we, um, make, if, why don't we make a motion, uh, for a date in the future when this could be heard? Maybe May sixteenth at ten thirty AM?
Probably, new council, probably.
June sixth at ten thirty AM?
We're going to give them a little time.
But see, I think you need...
The opposition.
Okay. Ask if people object to the continuing.
And, and what we're going to do is, uh, we're going to go to the public, we're going to ask anyone who, um, object, object to this being continued, you, you may come forward and speak.
So, just to be clear, I'm going to make a motion to continue this to June sixth at ten thirty AM. I believe that the public comment should only be about the continuance, not the merits of the thing, right?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, ma'am, you can step aside, and, 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 um, we're here those who object to this being continued.
Good morning.
Yeah, just speak, yeah, just, just speak.
Oh, good morning. My name is Ruth J. Fleming, and I live at thirty-six oh five East Lambright Street. I am president of Woodland Terrace Neighborhood Watch, of which we have several of our members present this morning for this hearing, and we object of this group home being put in our residence. We, uh, we have a-
Well, well, Miss Fleming, the only thing right now, because she requested to continue this, only thing we can, we can hear from anyone who wants to speak, that whether you support or object to this being continued.
We object to it being discontinued. I mean, we want to do it today, we came, we made preparations today to come, because we got the, um, we saw the sign and everything on the corner. So, it's difficult for, for us to keep coming down here, um, because we are, most of us are some working, have to get off from work and everything, so we think we should be able to settle this today. I understand this have been down here, uh, two or three times prior to today, and, um, this is, uh, a little over, over the top here for us to have to keep changing and changing and changing.
All right, um... No, they, they talking about the zoning administrator.
Oh, oh.
Yeah, that's who they're talking about, yeah. All right, uh, anyone else which should speak on, uh, this thing?
Morning, councilman. I'm Aldo James Moses Moore, and I've been in my community for about fifty-three years, and I, I've enjoyed my community, because most of us are sell people, it's of age, retirement, and very few works in that neighborhood. We have kids and grandkids in and out of the neighborhood, we got a park right up the street.
Uh, here, hold, hold, let me, let me keep reminding everybody. We know, uh, what you want to say about the merit of this, this case.
Okay.
Only thing we, we able to hear right now, by law, if you object to this being continued.
I object.
Okay, yeah, or you support it being continued, I mean, that's the only thing we can hear right now, and then the council will weigh, uh, make a decision.
Thank you. I object to them moving into our neighborhood.
Okay, all right.
My name is Levi Fleming, and I live at thirty-six oh five East Lambright Street, and I wholeheartedly object. Thank you.
All right.
Hi, good morning, council.
My name is Jared Balone, I live at thirty-four fifteen East Farm Street, and I do object to this being continued.
Good morning, councilman. Uh, my name is Matthew James, I live at thirty-six twenty East Lambright Street, and I do object to this continuance.
My name is Yvonne Douglas, and I live at thirty-four zero nine East Knollwood, and I object to this being continued.
Good morning, my name is Antonette Pierce, and, um, I live at thirty-six oh seven East Diana, and I also have, uh, two other properties that I'm associated with in proximity, one ac- two, actually, directly across from, uh, the proposed, uh, property, and I request that the continuance, um, the continuance not be granted.
Good morning, I'm Brian Everett, I live at sixty-five oh eight North Thirty-Fourth Street, on the, on the corner of Thirty-Fourth Street and Knollwood, I've been there since nineteen sixty-eight, and I object.
All right, anyone else? Okay, um, uh, um, I, I think we had a motion.
I don't believe, I don't know if it was seconded or not.
I, I thought.
It was seconded, okay.
Well, well, let me, let me just say this, um, I'm not going to support the, the motion to continue, uh, this, because, um, I know that, um, this, this application been in and out of the zoning, uh, uh, and the various review, and, and, uh, and, you know, these, these people have taken the time to be down here and, 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 um, to, to voice their opinion, and they, they've been denied that opportunity, um, because we don't have the, the full slate. But I'm, I'm not going to support the continuation, and, and, and hope that we can move forward and make a decision on this, uh, today.
Let me ask the city, uh, I see the, an attorney in the city, from the city attorney's office, regarding, uh, continuations in the process. I don't want to in any way weigh in, I said it earlier, maybe I shouldn't have said, but I feel that I have to tell the public how I feel on the zoning forum, I knew what it was, and I said I was not going to support it, because of my past history in voting against anything within twelve hundred feet of it. So, I, I stated that on the record, but I do it, and I would do it again if I knew this was going to happen, because that's the way, you got to be straightforward, and I appreciate the neighborhood coming forward, and I, I hope, if it's continued, they come back.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Miranda. I, I was actually try, not sure I completely understood your earlier statement, whether you said you had historically denied them, or that you were planning on denying that. Based upon that, you are basically down to four possible potential votes, which puts you in essentially the same position, so I do have some concerns going forward, when you have one council member who said he will not be able to support this without hearing the testimony at this point.
And again, I apologize to the public that's here, but I have to do what I think is best, going forward.
So, to clarify, you're concerned that we proceed?
I am concerned if you proceed, because then you're back down to essentially four possible votes, which puts you in the same position of your rules as when it's a mandatory one. I, I can't say anything more than that, but I, I do want to let you know, and I thank you, Mr. Miranda, for clarifying that, because I was running through my mind, and I wasn't sure I completely understood what you were saying, but based upon that, I do have concerns with this going forward today, with just four members who could potentially vote for it.
Well, let me ask you a question. There's a motion here, and I suppose that the motion is, is denied?
If the motion's denied, and it goes forward, it goes forward. I was just asked a question, and so I felt it was appropriate to let you know that I do have some concerns, based upon the fact that your rules state that if you only have four possible members who can vote for something, that it's a continuance is a matter of right, there was a continuance, and based upon Mr. Miranda honestly stating on the record that he is not going to be able to support it, you are essentially in the same position.
Right, and, and if it's denied, we're basically in the same position.
She says we can't, because we have four votes, only that we know one is not, so we're basically back to four votes.
Four votes.
So, by that, they're granted a continuance by right.
My recommendation to couns- I'm sorry if I'm not being clear.
I understand, I'm sorry.
I, I'm trying not to box you in, but at the same time, I, I do want to be honest, I have legal concerns with you proceeding forward today, based upon the fact that your rules state that if you have four members, and the petitioner asks for a, asks for a continuance, it's as of a matter of right. And so my recommendation to you, to be clear, would be that you grant this request for a continuance. It doesn't mean that you have to continually grant them, but I, I do think it's, you're in somewhat of a difficult position.
Well, we, we, uh, what I'm suggest that we, we take a five-minute recess, because I just got word that Mr. Suarez is coming back, so that would give us six.
We, we could also move on to our next thing, wait for him to get here, and just, yeah, and then do it.
So, we're going, we're going to table this, and allow Mr. Suarez to come back, and, and he should be back in.
And then I'll withdraw my motion for a continuance.
That certainly would, um...
All right, then we'll go to staff report, and, 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 uh, and wait for Mr. Suarez to arrive. All right, uh, item number seventy-one. Uh, seventy-two, sorry.
Kristen Moore, Legal Department, good morning again, council. Um, I actually have a substitute resolution on this. Uh, the resolution is amended to the June first dates, that, this is the technical manual that goes with the new tree code that you just adopted. Um, it will have the June first date, so it will go into effect at the same time as the new tree code. Um, there als- also are some, um, amendments, uh, to the revised one attached. It's been, uh, it's been unified to, um... It, it's been unified to, uh, to marry to the new code.
What you need to go check?
Oh, okay, okay. All right, so, well, now we're down to... Oh, here he is. Okay, I, I'm going to move this resolution.
Okay. Please do. All right, sorry about that.
And that's the substitute resolution, just for Claire.
Okay.
Suarez, Cohen.
Here.
Maniscalco.
Here.
Reddick.
Here.
Capin, Miranda.
Here.
Viera.
All right.
I moved the substitute resolution.
Um, all right, got a motion from Mr. Cohen, second by, uh, Mr. Miranda. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
On the post. Item number seventy-three.
Chuck Weber, Water Department. Uh, liquid ferris sulfate is a equivalent we use in the water treatment process. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any question from council?
Second.
All right, I got a motion from Mr. Miranda, second by Mr. Cohen. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
On the post, all right. Seventy-four.
I'm not leaving. I'll be right here.
Seventy-four.
Ocela, Ocela Win, the Department of Logistics and Asset Management, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have on the citywide electrical contract.
All right, any question from council?
Move the resolution.
Second.
All right, got a motion from Miranda, second by Mr. Cohen. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All right, item number seventy-five. Item seventy-five.
Good morning, Council. Mark Wilfaw, Department of Solid Waste Environmental Program Management, uh, here to answer any questions that you may have regarding our compressed natural gas fuel installation at Spree Street.
Any, any question from council?
Move the resolution.
Second.
All right, got a motion from Mr. Cohen, second by Mr. Miranda. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
On the post. All right, uh, item number seventy-six.
That's to be received and filed. Yeah, just move to receive and file.
Second.
Okay. I've got a, a motion from Mr. Cohen, second by, uh, Mr. Maniscalco. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All right, uh, item number seventy-seven.
Good morning, City Council members. Uh, Jean Duncan with the Transportation and Stormwater Services Department. Uh, there was a motion regarding some concerns that, uh, one of our residents posed at the last meeting about speeding around the Potter Elementary School. I've got a good news, uh, response for you today. Uh, this school is located along the Thirty-Fourth Street corridor of where we've been planning for a couple of years now, a major corridor improvement project that's going to bring in additional street lighting, traffic calming, uh, other enhancements along the corridor to make it safer. And as part of that project, we had planned to upgrade the school zone along Potter Elementary School. So what we're proposing is to accelerate that portion of the project. And just to kind of give you a general idea, I'll put this on the Elmo here. You can kind of see some assorted signage on there. But essentially what we're going to do is we're going to take out the older outdated static signs. We're going to be putting in school flashers. Those school flashers will be able to be timed based on the school schedules that, of course, change every year, and then the static signs become outdated. So they'll be able to be timed during those school hours, so that when the school zone is a fifteen mile an hour condition, the flashers will be timed to operate during that time. We'll also upgrade all of the existing signage, put pavement markings on the roadway to give advance warning to the drivers. And we plan to have this done in three months or less, in time for the new school year to start in the fall. So I think this is going to, um, bring some comfort to those that were concerned about the speeding. And again, with the corridor project that will follow next year, additional traffic calming will be, um, brought in through that project for the entire corridor, which we hope will, um, again, have some positive benefit for the school area.
Uh, Ms. Duncan, thank, thank, thank you, uh, for giving some attention to this. Uh, this was just recently brought to our attention, uh, about the, 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 because of the speeding and, 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 and it being in the school zone. Um, and, you know, and I went through that the other day, just to take a look, and I see where law enforcement had put one of those little, little, I don't know what they call them.
The radar display signs?
Right, right.
Yes, yes, sir.
Uh, 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 and, and, um, so hopefully this would improve, uh, the traffic safety for those, those kids that are attending Potter Elementary School. 'Cause, and what I'm hearing is that, the, 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 the problem that they're having is between the morning time, uh, when school is just taking in.
Mm-hmm.
And the afternoon, when they basically getting out.
Yes.
And, and, uh, and I have noticed the speeding, because, you know, we, before, we didn't have a four-way stop sign.
Yes.
But what I'm finding, they're running that four-way stop sign. Uh, 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 so I'm, I'm, um, I'm just glad that you, 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 um, took, took immediate attention to this. Uh, and hopefully we can get this resolved by the time the next school year come around.
Yes, and I thank the TPD folks that went out and added some enforcement as well. And, um, so we're hopeful that the combination of those things is going to be a safer condition for these students.
All right, but thanks a lot.
Yes, sir.
All right, uh, you up for seventy-eight, too?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Yes, um, uh, we appreciate the support of the four e-scooter, motorized scooter operating, uh, contracts from our last council meeting. There were some concerns expressed about this program. And so we, uh, you know, it's one of those situations where we have interest by the public of having other mode choices. People are wanting to solve that problem of the first mile, last mile, how to get around without being in a vehicle and having some other choices. Um, but all those things come with a learning curve and with some unintended consequences, which you certainly don't want to see. So because we were getting interest from, um, vendors coming in and wanting to set up shop with their, their scooters, and I know some of them reached out to some of our council members as well, uh, we decided to do a little research, and I thought I'd give you just a very quick overview of the pilot program that we have planned, the research we did in terms of other problems other cities were having. I'll be very brief, and then you're certainly welcome to ask any questions. If you like, I have a summary of that pilot program that I'm, I'll hand out to you, but I, this isn't intended to kind of throw too much information all at once. It's just a, a go-to document. If you want to peruse it at, at some point in time, it outlines our program that I thought you might be interested in. So, very quickly, um, as I said, we were having some, uh, interest of the public and of the vendors to come into the city to set up a, a program. Uh, what we found with other cities is that they were having these folks come in without any framework at all and wreaking havoc on these different cities, getting bad headlines of improper behavior, people getting frustrated with the scooters, and they were getting left around on sidewalks, people throwing them across bridges because they were getting annoyed with them, and all kinds of bad things. So certainly these companies do not want to continue that kind of business model. I think they've learned their lessons as well about coming in in a more responsible fashion and having these, these scooters be, uh, accepted in a more positive way. So we did a lot of research and found that City of Santa Monica, thank you for looking for that. City of Santa Monica, California had a very good program that we took a lot of their lessons learned from that, decided to be proactive with the situation, and set up a pilot program. It's a one-year pilot program where we can see how these scooters are going to operate within our, our, um, on our sidewalks with our other modes that we have available. That is one of the, um, challenging aspects of this, is that currently the Florida statutes only allow a provision for cities to pass an ordinance to allow scooters on the sidewalks only. They're not allowed anywhere at all unless the city passes an ordinance, and even then we can only allow them on the sidewalks and not on the bicycle lanes or low-speed roads. We expect, because of lobbying that's going on in Tallahassee, that there will be some legislation that'll come out this session potentially that will probably change that and allow them, um, on these low-speed roads and bicycle lanes, which would be a much better circumstance. But given that we have that as our only option, we're going to go forward, and, um, we've put in as many onerous, uh, control aspects into this program as possible to try to ensure that within this timeframe of a year, that we have the safest conditions possible. I'll just mention a few of those to you, just so you can kind of get an idea. There's technology that the vendors have available where they can do what's called geofencing. That geofencing basically controls that the scooters are going to stay in our designated area, which is the last, uh, page of the document that I just shared with you. That map is showing the only areas that we're going to allow these scooters. So if a rider goes beyond that limit, the scooter will turn off, and they will glide to a stop, and then it kind of forces them to go back into the proper area. We're also requesting that they put a what's called a governor on the scooter, which will control the speed to about six miles an hour. Currently bicycles can ride fifteen miles an hour on a sidewalk. So you can imagine we're only allowing, uh, less than half that speed on our sidewalks with the scooters. We've also been very specific about the maximum number of scooters that each vendor can have. We're requiring what we're calling corrals, which are painted areas on the right-of-way where the scooters will have to be staged. We don't want them just lying about anywhere, blocking sidewalks and creating problems. We've requested that they have a liaison available twenty-four seven that we can contact to address any complaints in terms of scooters causing an issue being in the way. We've asked them to put in incentives and ways to disincentivize bad behavior of their users. They've all indicated, all four of them, that they will be looking to have an eighteen-year minimum age requirement for those that they're going to rent these scooters to, and of course, a driver's license as well. And, uh, we also have the rights to ask, uh, if there was a special event or some circumstance that our, our police department indicates is important. We can ask that they be cleared out of the right-of-way within twelve hours for any kind of special event such as Gasparilla or any other circumstance that might be coming along, such as a hurricane or a bad storm. Enforcement by our police officers is a tool of last resort that we would like to see used. If the vendors follow the protocols we've laid out, the users are responsible, we should have minimal issues, and we should not have to tie up our police force time of enforcing any bad behaviors. And we're hopeful that that will be the case. If things just get, go awry for whatever reason at all, we can shut down the program immediately. So we feel like we've done research on other cities, we've taken lessons learned, we've put in the best framework that we can under the circumstances to have a safe program. And again, we are wanting to offer other mode choices to our visitors and our residents, so they can have an alternate way to get around quickly without driving a vehicle. So that's the, the overview of the program, and I'm here along with, uh, folks from the Tampa Police Department and our legal department if you had any additional questions that you'd like to ask.
Ms. Miranda. Thank you, Chairman. Is, are there any cities to your knowledge that have had this program and have discontinued it at all?
Uh, I'd have to defer to my expert over here, Mr. Calvin Thornton. He's going to be our point of contact during this program. He's shaking his head no. He's done a lot of research to see who's doing what, um, how many scooters different cities are allowing. For example, we found it interesting that Los Angeles is allowing a hundred thousand scooters in their city. We're only allowing twenty-four hundred. So no, sir.
Uh, with law enforcement, would, would certain officers be designated to mon, monitor this, or it just be regularly patrolled? And if you come in contact with somebody and violates you, you'll just warn them, incite them, or something like that? How would that work?
Right, Patrick Messworth, TPD. Yeah, ba, basically it would be call-based. So if, uh, we get a complaint, the patrol officer or the bike squad, wh- wherever, would respond to that and would address the complaint. Obviously, there will be a legal bulletin put out. Our officers are going to be made aware of the ordinance, what it entails, what the responsibilities are. So, you know, the, the primary role here is education. If we see somebody riding on Bay Shore, for instance, or the Riverwalk, um, our first goal is to tell them to go ride somewhere else. Assuming they, they listen, we're not going to have to issue them a citation or, or a civil citation. But there is that provision in the ordinance, similar to the marijuana ordinance, where we can issue civil citations for violations of the ordinance.
Oh, okay. Ms. Capin.
Yes, uh, I got a note here. Somebody that was in Indianapolis this summer and said that they have a scooter program. The scooters were everywhere. And the person gets to the location, they just leave off, they just get off and leave it across the sidewalk, on the doorway, in the street, no. And, um, how, that's going to happen here. It's going to happen. And that, that's why I didn't vote for it, because I don't see, I do not. They're not going to take the scooter back to wherever it is and then walk back to where they're supposed to be going. So that was just an observation from one of, one of our constituents.
Ms. Miranda. Thank you. I, in reading this, uh, proposal, is fifty dollars going to cover the fee of impoundment with the police hours, time, the salaries, and the cars, and everything else you have to do?
I would say so, because it's, it's not like a car where we're going to have to, we're going to have to wait for a wrecker and so forth. They can put the scooter in the back of the patrol car, drive it to the impound lot. Pretty much everybody's within ten minutes or so of the impound lot, so I don't, I don't.
Who's going to impound it? The police are going to impound it in their car, or you're going to have a scooter, a wrecker?
Well, I, I think the, the first goal is, as Ms. Capin said, if somebody leaves the scooter out, the, the company should be the first one to, to go and, and pick that up. And I know one of the, um, a jump, I believe, actually has a provision where if somebody leaves the scooter in a place they shouldn't, that person gets charged twenty-five dollars, so that should act as a deterrent. Last resort is the police department conducting the impoundment. Correct.
And along with Ms. Capin, I was on the verge of voting against it, but I said, let me try out the program first, see how it is for a short period of time, and, and then go from there. But, uh, I'm very apprehensive about it, because you can only drive them on sidewalks, and sidewalks are for people to walk on. And in today's society, that you had to go walk, and then they, you see a TV ad, oh, delivery of food to your house. So, I mean, there's mixed signals going on everywhere in this society, and, uh, I, I hope that it works out, but I'm also willing to vote against it in a heartbeat.
Uh, can, can, uh, in due course, Council, we need an addition of time to move further.
F, half hour.
F hour. Okay, um, all right, so we, we've got addition of half hour. Okay, next question?
Do we want to, want to vote on that?
Yeah. Yeah. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
On the post.
Thank you, Chair. Um, yeah, I apologize for coming back, uh, you know.
Thank you.
No, we thank you for coming back.
Thank you for coming back.
And thank goodness that, you know, the doctor, uh, did a quick job. So anyway, um, here's the, here's some of the issues. Right now, and I want to ask Ms. Duncan this, um, we, we have Coast Bike Share, which has a similar idea of what we're trying to do with the scooters, correct?
Yes, sir.
Meaning that we have locations in which you can rent them, and they're parked, and then, uh, they are picked up by Coast Bike Share.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. How many bicycles do we have in the city, do you know?
Five hundred.
We've got five hundred. Now, this is significantly more, okay? But the idea is the same, meaning that the, uh, the, uh, companies are supposed to pick up their bikes if they are not at a corral. And I think I'm using the terminology right.
That is correct.
I know that bird uses roost or whatever, and they, you know, I think lion uses juicers. They all have really cool names. Um, so, uh, you know, that is part of the contract and part of the reason why they are allowed to have this, which is different than all these other cities that have been, uh, experimenting with the scooters. I think that LA is the example, it was either LA or San Diego, I can't remember which one, where they just dumped all the, uh, all the scooters out there, and it was an incredible headache for rights-of-way, for sidewalks, other things, if I'm not mistaken. But this is the reason why that we've created this pilot project specifically with these kind of restrictions in it. The other thing is, and this is something I was having a conversation with somebody a couple of days ago, uh, we have the geofencing as part of, uh, the prohibition on Seventh, Bay Shore Boulevard, the Tampa Riverwalk. Uh, those three locations, we have geofencing, correct?
Yes.
So all four of the vendors cannot have a, uh, I guess it's electronic fencing on it, so that it stops the, it stops the motorized vehicle. It can't be used, correct?
Yes, that's, that was a, a request that we had in our proposal, yes.
Okay, terrific. I just wanted to make sure of that. And then lastly, are you following the legislation in, in the, uh, Florida Legislature that, uh, will be voted on before the end of this month that will, uh, will restrict? month that will, will restrict the motorized scooters to the street or to the bike lanes? Am I correct?
Yes, yes. And Debbie Stevenson has been keeping an eye on that as well. So, like I said, we expect some changes to come along with that, which we think will be very favorable to feed into our program that we've set up.
Well, I, I think that when we first passed this, and I was, I definitely made a comment about it, which is, I don't want to see these on sidewalks at all. But I understood that the legislature was working very hard to make sure that this happens. Let's hope it gets passed.
Yes.
If it doesn't get passed, we're going to have a pretty bad year of the pilot project, regardless of how good of a process we put in place, because people are going to be using it on sidewalks, and we don't want that. If the legislature passes it, and obviously I know that our police officers are going to be well-informed on what that is and what the violation will be if they are using it on sidewalks, that gives it an extra oof to what we have in our ordinance in addition to what the state law is going to say. It should really help to make sure it stays on the street or on the bike paths. So let's hope, knock on wood, that they do the right thing and they pass that, that piece of legislation.
Yes.
Thanks so much, Ms. Duncan. Appreciate your help.
I want to make sure that I understood exactly what you said. You said that this program could end in a heartbeat.
Yes.
You decided that there was a need and necessity for the safety of the public.
That is correct.
On either way. And, and then I just heard that there's a reason that you have to have. Do you have to have? What kind of reasons for a year? What was the, the, the one that was passed, your reasoning, was it for six months or a year?
So we, we pass an ordinance for our city alone that allows the scooters to be on the sidewalks.
For how long?
And that is, if you're, through a vendor, that is through a vendor. That's an ordinance that's on the books. There's no time limit on it, if you'll be hard here. It's just, it's just on the books.
I understand that.
The program itself, we can decide to end that at any point in time. We've decided we want to give it a year to really see how things are going to work. But we can end the program at any time.
You decided to give it a year. Does that mean it's got to be a year?
No.
Within a year, you can say, "Adios, mama."
We can end it at any time at all. We just felt that a year was enough time to really see how the, the system will work.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any additional questions or comments?
Real quick, and I said this before, when I was in Dallas and I saw the, how the scooters were there, a lot of people riding them, and I saw one rogue scooter, that's what I'll call it, meaning it was just knocked over. I think it was in front of a CVS on the sidewalk. But other than that, they were in the corrals. People were respectful and responsible when using them. I didn't see them weaving in and out of traffic, being, you know, foolish. So we'll see. I mean, we'll, we'll see how this works. If not, I mean, if we get to it, I know it can be terminated, correct?
Yes, sir.
So, you know, we'll go from there. And also, you mentioned Los Angeles wanted, what, 100,000 scooters?
Yes.
And we're doing, what, 2% of that here?
Right.
So, so we'll see how, how it is. All right.
Everything is based on population.
Okay.
Not if you're going to spend money.
People do things for money. Population is there. What is the speed, the maximum speed on one of these scooters?
Well, we've requested that they be governed at about approximately six miles an hour. And as I mentioned, the bicycles can go 15 miles an hour on the sidewalk. So it's a pretty big difference in speed.
So it'd be difficult to get a DUI with six miles per hour, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Anything else? All right, we, thank you. And we go to number 79.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Council. Tom Sterling, Planning and Development. I'm here to come back and give you a report on what's been going on with our efforts to streamline, reduce the cost, and to be more inclusive in our efforts discussing how we're going to govern and regulate tents, tent permits, costs, engineering, wind load factors, and those things. As I said at the last meeting, coming back this soon before council, there's parts of the research that we haven't completed yet. But what I can tell you, we have, we're not changing any way of, of how we're doing tents until this thing is resolved. How we're doing them currently, it's how we're going to continue to do them until the time that we get a pretty substantial agreement on where we're going for that. We held, Mr. Dryden put out a request for information to all of the people who we had emails for, and he received a great number of responses in terms of, you know, this is a concern or that's a concern. I'm going to touch on a couple of those right now. It's, there was some concern about having professionally architecturally drawn up site plans and engineering plans for the, for the tents. That's a cost. We, we think that we can really get, reduce that amount by going to what's called plans on file. We do that for affordable housing and some other kinds of projects. You pay for, you know, one type of tent, and several of the tent folks use the same tents again and again and again. You pay for that one time, and then you just, when you go to do another event, you just say, I'm doing tent A, or tent B, or tent C, and there is no engineering cost associated with that. The other thing that, that came up a lot, and there was pretty much a unanimous agreement on this, is about a wind mitigation plan. Given that we are in Florida, we are subject to severe weather popping up very quickly, sometimes with very short notice. I mean, hurricanes and major storms, we get more notification of that. But the ability at when the city, you know, when it, there's predictions of when, I'm just going to use 45 miles an hour, and your tent is rated at 40 miles an hour, or whatever it is, and there are different kinds of tents are rated at different wind, wind capacity or wind load speeds, that they agree that they do need to go out and get their tents down and, and, you know, secure their, their position. Some of the points that came up at our meeting, and the meeting was attended by about 25 or 30 people. It went very well. We told them, and I committed to that further, that until we work through the procedures and the processes and the costs and the engineering and all these other items that have, that come up, that we're going to continue to meet, and they were very happy about that. So we've kind of reestablished a good, a much better working relationship with the industry. Several of them came and they were, you know, were talking to us. There's also some confusion offered about when an electrical or an electrical permit has to be drawn, because at some of the events, people are using generators of a certain capacity. At other, other tent, or other events where there's a tent used, they have a TECO power pole that they tie into that. So sometimes people get electric permits, sometimes they don't. We have to work through the clarification as to, you know, when you're under condition A, B, or C, you need to get an electrical permit. 1, 2, 3, you don't have to get a permit. So we're working through some of those issues because frankly, there is some confusion that's out there right now. Oh. There is another concern about the validation of the fire retardant, retardant certificate that has to be issued. The fire marshal works very closely with that, and, you know, that will bring greater clarification to that, although the fire marshal office is, is pretty consistent with how they make that application. One of the things, let me find my paper. I've got tons of paper today. Right now, what happens is that depending on the type of event you're, you're putting up a tent for, or the nature of what you're trying to stage, you can have to go up to four different locations. It's a four-stop shop, not a one-stop shop. Depending on the event and the size, you may have to go to Parks and Recreation to the special event permitting process, and then that kicks you to do other kinds of requirements, which includes automatically a fire marshal office. And the fire marshal and the special events coordinator, they're both over at, on Heim's, where you can do that there. But then if your event involves alcohol, and as you know, a great many of our special events that use these tents do involve alcohol, you have to come to the zoning office at 1400, go through the, the alcohol beverage permit process. And then, depending again on the size of the tent, you may also have to go through and get a building permit. So our ultimate goal is to make that process that's involving several departments, not only just my building department, is to make that a little bit more streamlined and easier. The ultimate goal is to address this, this entire issue, and not just to, you know, put a Band-Aid on something and go forward. We've, we've tried to communicate that back to the industry, and I think we were successful. So I don't know if any of them are here today that you may want to hear from. I don't want to put words in their mouth, but I thought we're on a, a better and a successful path. Some of the specific items that Councilman Miranda made in his motion was about, you know, what, what is being permitted today, today, and we haven't changed it. Still up to the 5,000 square feet. You pull the permit, the GC and stuff like that. We're not changing any of that just yet. And I, we are working through the regulations to be proposed. The scale of the fees, the costs associated with pulling a tent permit, putting on this thing, the gentleman that spoke this morning talked almost exclusively about the cost, the fees are something we can control. And, you know, we're, we're looking to make those as reasonable as possible and, and go from there. We're not looking to gouge anybody. We're not looking to make a profit. So, you know, we're trying to make sure that, you know, well, that is an area that we can work in. The cost of engineering, almost unanimously, the, the industry individuals that were in attendance agreed that that can be an extremely costly requirement, upwards of a couple thousand bucks. And if you're going to do one event or two events, and you got to come in every time and turn in, pay 1,500, $2,000 for an engineering plan, that is cost prohibitive. So that's where the plans on file comes into play, because then it could be a single thing, and you could use that as many times as you have an event.
If I could, Chair, so explain what you're saying in that circumstance, meaning that the type of tent, the, because it's not, it's not based only on the event, it's based on the type of tent. Are you, is that what you're saying?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so that they can put on file, especially if they're a, a vendor or purveyor of these tents that is done in the same process each and every time, that it can be filed for them to say, "We do 100 tents a year. This is the process we use for these sized tents", and then it'll be on file with us, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure I got that straight. Thank you.
Yes. And that, that could be a huge, as you say, if they're doing 100 events, $2,000 times 100 events, it's almost a quarter of a million bucks.
Right.
So, okay.
Thank you, Chair.
We did do a little research, although, you know, I'm happy to say, in my 27 years here with the city of Tampa, there hasn't been a major failing of an event. So I can tell you that, Councilman Miranda. But we did, Marvin did do some research, and he found that between, there was a, a big study done between 2010 and 2015, and they had, you know, minor mishaps, but in that five-year period, there were 12 deaths. Primarily, nine of those deaths came from carbon monoxide inhaling. So if you have an event where you have a generator too close to the tent, that could be gassing into the tent itself, and people have died because of that. Two people have died because of a tent failure, and one died of a tent collapse, or of, it was on fire. So there haven't been a huge amount of, of that, but in that five-year period that we studied, actually it was a six-year period, it, there were some deaths. And that's just not acceptable if there's something that we can do to help prevent that.
Ms. Moran.
Thank you. And I'm not here to dispute that at all, sir. But I would imagine that if you have a generator equal to or greater than, more people die in a house than they do in a tent, especially when you have storms in this area.
Yeah.
And throughout the areas that have different type of storms. I understand what you're saying. I don't accept it as, as the facts. Not that you're lying or not, but as a factual matter, you didn't compare it with any other thing. You just compared it to a tent. You compared it to a house. You see the same ratio or greater.
I would guess greater.
People who have passed away because of the same event.
Well, and it, it's the things with, in the wintertime, when people are using the fireplace.
I understand, the heating. I understand all that, sir. I appreciate your comments.
Okay. What, what are they doing in other cities? And this is the thing that we're investigating perhaps the closest, because this is where it involves using, requiring a general contractor to do a submittal. I believe in Clearwater and in Bradenton or Manatee County, they have, or they allow a person that is a, a tent installer license to pull the permit. We did approach Hillsborough County about allowing that to happen here. We didn't quite get the reception that we wanted, but we're going to continue to pursue that and to see, because they're the licensing board for the county, and we have to abide by that because we have an interlocal agreement. But Jared has promised me he's going to continue to work and to see if we can get in, because that is going to be one of the other big expenses. So the biggest expenses were the engineered drawings and the subcontractor issue. The other thing, and just, just to be clear, the councilman had asked if tents are required to have sprinkler systems. And the answer, the short answer to that is no, they're not. I'm, not until they become, and I hope I'm saying this right, John, not until they become a permanent structure or are intended to be a permanent structure, does that review come into play. What is more common is that they are required to do what is called a fire watch. That's when you place, and if you go to a lot of the events on courtesy section, you'll bump into Corey. He's down there as, on a fire watch, and that's in a very open area. A lot of the fire watch requirements have more to do with the occupancy load and the number of attendees and the place of assembly type things. And as the tents get bigger, the occupancy load gets bigger, triggering the possibility of a fire watch requirement. So, but sprinklers in and of themselves are not. And yes, we did a conference call, Julia Mandell from the Tampa Housing, or Tampa Sports Authority into the meeting, and she was in attendance as well. I think I covered most of it. That was perhaps one of the longest motions I've ever had to look at. But I'm feeling good about the progress we made. I think several of the vendors are feeling the same. I didn't bring a couple of testimonial emails I got. One of the, well, the gentleman and, and one of the women who were the most outspoken about changing the process, and this is already on tape, was Mr. Pressman, who represented Galaxy Fireworks. We have emails from both of them that's saying, "This is a great start. Let's keep this going." So that's where we are. And the other thing is too, as was said before about the tree, three of the council people who were, got this thing started are still going to be on the board, so there will be additional forward-going accountability on resolving this issue.
Thank you. Did we cover everything? Like, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, if I may, what, what was the permitting process before today? What are the regulations being proposed? Some of that was covered. The scales of fee for the smallest tent, so forth and so on. I want to know the whole ramification to vote on the whole enchilada before I take a bite at one crab.
I'm sorry, I spaced out for a moment.
Both people like myself are deaf. That's what I said. You heard that one.
I heard that. On, on the fees, I, I'm going to have to bring you back the specific information on the size of the tents, but it, it, you know, the, the actual fees for tent permitting is not all that substantial. I believe that the cost that was bothering everybody, engineering costs, using a GC cost, repetitive submittals cost, those were the things that came up.
What I'm trying to say is that you have, maybe you have a couple of kids that want to put a lemonade thing on the front of their house.
That costs about $5,000. No, I'm kidding.
It should have. It'd be $50,000. But what's, I mean, we haven't discussed anything like that.
No.
I'm a very simple person.
If, if a child, well, the, the, the good news is, if a kid is throwing up a 10 by 10, easy up, tent, he doesn't have to do a permit for that.
What about a 10 by 20?
10 by 20? Where's Marvin? Yeah? A 10 by 20, we would start to want to look at that. That's 120 square feet. But see, and there, and there's, here's the challenge, Councilman, is that some of our codes today, the zoning code, for example, says that if you have 120 square foot tent to be up for more than 24 hours, you have to go through a process, like a vendor, and you have to, you have to meet the zoning code, you have to do certain regulatory kinds of things for a tent that's small. And then some of the other codes don't require certain kinds of And then some of the other codes don't require certain kinds of reviews until they get up to 900 square feet. So there's a lot of disparaging numbers between the four entities that I described, special events, fire, building and zoning. The goal is to get those together. But right now, we are not requiring or doing a whole lot of review of tents up to 5,000 square feet. That number will come down. I can tell you that. Finding what that number is going to be and having people still not want to.
I'm not opposed to doing something on the large events, but when I see houses that have tents in front of their houses for carport stuff that are against the law, number one. Number two, they don't have a carport. That's what they have. And no one's done anything for 50 years and then they build something and no one's done anything for the last 50 years and I'm going to go after somebody who's got a 10 by 20 tent that wants to pop it up to have a party. I have a problem. I had, it was mentioned earlier, heartburn. I have double heartburn and esophageal problem that comes with it because I can't take that. When I see the city in all parts of the area, not in just one district, that there's thousands of violations. And that's not you. We're not enforcing the law. When I see people out in the street cutting and mowing grass and putting it inside their sewer system, that there's a law in chapter 27 against that, in all my years of public service, not one time have I seen a ticket given for that. I have a problem with the law. And it's not you, sir. I'm just saying in general. That's where I'm at.
All right, I need 15 more minutes.
So move. Better get 30, Mr. Chairman. We still have another case after this one.
I was trying to throw some hints at.
I understand. I appreciate the hint.
We will be back and I can meet offline with various council members to kind of hone in on specifically what you're trying to do and, you know, we're going to have additional meetings with the industry and I'll be reporting back to you a few more times, I'm sure.
I got a motion to stand for 30 more minutes. All the other motions, yeah?
Aye.
Anything else, Mr. Miranda?
Real quick, I'm going to tell you, I was at the beach a few weeks ago, threw up a tent that was 12 by 12. That's 144 square feet. Just threw it right up and it stayed up all day.
Did you get a permit? Did you get a permit?
At the beach? Actually, we were partying. No, it was 12 by 12, 144 square feet. There you go. That wouldn't have needed a permit.
There are issues that we have to work through. There are no question about that. And believe me, we have heard loud and clear from the industry on what their concerns are.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
All right.
They had public comments. All right, we go back to item 71.
Okay. It's going to be continued.
Chair, before you move forward, I'd just like to know where are we at in the process on 71 since I came in late?
We're starting.
Oh, you're starting it, okay.
Do you want me to recap since Mr. Suarez wasn't here?
Why are we starting? Wait a minute, wait a minute.
We're just going to recap.
Okay.
Just going to do a quick recap of what?
Because I thought we had to continue by right. Oh, that's right. Oh, okay, okay. Well, in that case, I have to, I really have to hurry up because I have to leave. I'm serious. This is like.
Everybody stop yapping and let him talk so we can get out of here, all right?
Erkott Land Development Coordination, I have been sworn. Just to recap, this is a petition for review for a special use SU 119-16 for a property at 34206 East Lambright. The issue before you is the distance separation. Per code, when you have a congregant care facility, it's a 1,200 linear foot separation distance. This is the, this is the subject property. The property located at 3501 East Knollwood is 316 feet from the subject property. So they're asking for the waiver from the 1,200 feet down to the 316 feet. That's what's basically before you tonight. Any questions for me?
Any questions for council?
Okay.
I could. And so that's, that's the only issue. They meet all other requirements except for the distance separation.
They meet all the special use requirements. There are some issues with their site plan they'll have to address when they get, if it's approved and they get to permitting, then they'll have to address those issues, but before council, it's just the distance separation.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So petition, you understand where we're at now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So.
If I could, the petitioners already made their case, correct?
Right.
Okay, with permission, the legal department, if I could just have them come on, I just have a couple of questions.
Legal department. No, no, the legal department.
I just want to make sure where we're at, where we stand.
Ms. Kurt, in relation to?
I didn't understand. Yes.
Is it okay if I question the applicant by virtue of the fact that I was not here for the beginning of the hearing?
Yes, and I would just say for the record that the applicant and all parties have a right to have a fair and impartial decision maker who's heard all the evidence. So if you haven't heard something, then you need to have an opportunity for her to restate her case again.
So me making, asking questions is perfectly fine?
Perfectly fine.
Okay. If the applicant could.
All right, the applicant, would you come forward?
Ma'am, could you give me your name, please?
My name is Catherine McQuar.
Okay, Ms. McQuar? Is that how you pronounce it?
Yes.
Okay. I apologize for not being here when you first presented some of the questions. Now you, do you have to be certified by the state in order to open up your assisted living facility after we give you the, if we give you the special use permit to do so?
Yes, the only problem is the zoning because of the other guy, the other business person who is operating an assisted living facility. That was the only issue that I had with the city.
Okay, I was asking a different question, though. The question is, are you prepared? You've already gotten permission and agreement from the state in order to open this facility? You qualify for all other aspects of it?
Yes.
Okay. Have you been in this type of business before, previously?
In a different state.
In a different state? Which state was it?
Kansas.
You were in Kansas?
Yes.
Well, welcome to Florida.
Thank you.
In terms of this, this is a house that you either, did you inherit or did you buy it for this?
I just bought the house.
You just bought it? Okay.
Last year, purposely for the business.
Okay, so your application is not, let me see how I can ask this. You have already purchased the property. You're not waiting for a approval from us first in order to purchase the property, is that correct?
No, I already bought the property last year.
Terrific. When you bought the property, were you looking at making this into an assisted living facility at that time?
Yes, that was the main focus why I bought it.
Before you purchased the house, did you look at what our requirements were for this type of use of the home?
Yes.
You did.
I made my inquiry and I found out that the person who owns a business around that vicinity had assisted living service that he was doing there. And he deals actually with a different category of the clients that we work with. So that was the main reason why I didn't make any other suggestion that it will not pass. Because usually with the state of Florida, according to A P D, if both partners are not doing the same business, they don't have a problem with it. You just go ahead and do the zoning. So I didn't know that I was going to encounter this problem with this, with this property.
I think you answered my question, which is you were looking at state statute and you weren't looking at what the land use purpose was in terms of the separation. You didn't know about that before?
I knew about the separation.
You did.
I knew about the separation quite well, but the problem was we deal with two different category of business. So that was it.
Well, it sounds to me like you didn't know because you, obviously, the category is based on what the state is saying. It's not based on the separation for this particular purpose. That's the reason why I asked that question.
Okay.
So you already knew that there was a, there may be a problem with the city concerning the separation of the distance from one facility to another?
Yes, and I came here and make an inquiry and they told me that the only thing I could do was to petition about it.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much, Chair. Appreciate it.
All right, so.
No, I'm just wondering if you needed anything?
All right, so, so Mr. Kent. Any further comments? Question from a council member.
Thank you.
All right, so we go back to the motion? Do we, where do we go from here?
Public.
Go to the public?
Public, public on the merits.
Oh, so we go back, open it up to the mayor now?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so anyone wants to speak on item 71? And you don't, we have to restrict it to a continuum?
My name is Ruth J. Fleming. My address is 3605 East Lambright Street. I do oppose of the zone being changed in our area. We're in a residential area. There are no businesses in our area and most of the residents are elderly people. Some are still working and we have a quiet neighborhood. And the zoning part, we do not want it changed from residential because it would put it in a commercial, commercial type business now. I talked with Gloria at the zoning department, land development coordination, and she said that this item had been denied. And the reason it was denied is because we have the same type facility on 37th Street and it should be 1,200 feet apart. And this comes within 316 feet. So we have a lot of children. We have a school, an elementary school in our area. And we have 50 kids that the park, Woodland Terrace Park staff, go to the school every day and get the children and they walk them from the school to the park for after-school care until their parents can come and pick them up. We want a very safe environment for our children. Now, I have lived on Lambright for at least 25 years. We've never had any problems before and now things are picking up in our neighborhood. The police have to come often in our neighborhood now and we just don't approve of that. We don't want an additional facility.
You got 37th.
Of this nature in our neighborhood and we're asking city council to deny this because of the situation. We are the strongest, one of the strongest neighborhood watch groups in Tampa and there are a lot of people that don't attend the neighborhood watch meetings. Thank you very much.
Ms. Dupin.
I have to say something because I'm running out of time. And if I leave, we're back to four and it will be an automatic continuum. I need to let people know that we continued from 12 noon and I'm, I am running out of time.
How much time you got?
I'm late as it is right now.
All right, tell, give me, give me, how many, five minutes?
Five, yeah, five minutes.
All right, so, so, so have you all wanted to?
What I want to know is, is Councilman Suarez, do you need, I don't want to not let you have the information you need. So if you need more people to speak, you know, but I, if I leave, it'll be back to four.
No, don't leave me. Please don't leave.
We have to allow them to speak regardless of whatever. You know, I don't.
Well, that's to let them know, I will be leaving and I'm not, I'm not going to stay past five minutes. So you'll be back to four.
I got you.
I mean, I can do that.
I know, but I don't think we can stop the protest.
Yeah, you're right. I'm sorry.
No, no, it's okay.
Let me suggest this. Let me, let me suggest this. The president of the Neighborhood Association spoke and I believe her comment represent all of those who are going to stand up there and speak. So if we can accept what she represented to us, because that's what all of them, they're going to say the same thing.
Then, if I may clarify the record, if they just come in and say, "I agree, I agree, I agree, I agree." That way it's on the record. Or I disagree, one of the two.
Yeah. All right, so y'all just come, come back.
That's a good idea.
That way we suffice everything.
Yeah, we can get there in five minutes.
I'm James Miles Moore and I agree.
Thank you.
I'm Levi Fleming and I agree.
All right. All right, now.
I'm Antoinette Pearson, I agree with Ms. Fleming.
I'm Yvonne Douglas and I agree with Ms. Fleming.
I'm Jared Balood, I agree.
Marie Mosley and I agree.
Matthew James and I agree, except for one exception. Your property people, I understand what you said. But we were here for the tree people and the tent people, very quietly back there. That was not our fault because of the time. What I'm saying is, there are some issues here that she went out and did the reporting and I want to know if they've been resolved. And I don't know how we're going to answer this question. Your people went out, the transportation went out and they had a variance. They wanted to know about it. So I want to know if the issues have been resolved. Do I have the permission to speak, to ask the question? Can I ask the question?
I have three minutes and I'm leaving.
Yeah, she going, she going.
Rebecca Kurt, legal department, the issues that were raised in your staff report with transportation will have to be resolved if this is approved at time of permitting. Nothing additionally.
If it's approved, okay.
Right.
They'll have to take care of it.
But they haven't been done yet.
I'm Cora Floyd, I agree.
I'm Ellen Floyd, I agree.
All right, anything, ma'am, you want to say anything? Everybody?
Yes.
All right. Make it quick.
Yes, the question which, of which they are arguing.
State your name again.
My name is Catherine McQuar. I'm sorry for what they are all disagreeing with this current situation that I'm seeing. The same children that are going to live in that home, they are going to go to the same neighborhood school. They are going to the same neighborhood school. So how would they try to deprive another children from benefiting from the same community that their own parent also pay taxes? They'll be going to the same school. These children with developmental disability, the children with disability in that area will attend the same public schools. Are their parents not allowed or they don't have the right for their children to go to that community school in the area? Does it mean because a child is born developmentally disabled, should be deprived the right to go to school? I don't think so. The main focus in that home is to enable parents who cannot deal with children with developmental and learning disability to be able to stay in a facility which they are giving them the opportunity to learn. Is it not all of us? Who knows who will be disabled tomorrow? Are we born, people are born with disability? Do we, when we are pregnant as mothers, do we know the type of children we are going to born? Do we know the type of children we are going to give birth to? So why would they want to deprive a child with learning disability to not stay in the community? Is that fair? Is that fair? That's what I want to ask all of you. Oh, I'm sorry about that. No, it's just something that is just like, you are depriving another parent with children with developmental disability and learning disability not to stay in an environment that is integrated. That is not fair. To me, it is not fair. It is not fair. These children with learning disability don't cause any issue in the community because the same school that all these children are attending, they have children in that neighborhood with behavior disorders. Have the principal refused them from going to that school? I don't think so, no. So if they want to deprive these children from going to that school, so be it. It's very, very unfair for another parent who is trying to go to work. It's very, very unfair for another parent who is trying to go to work and keep their child somewhere to have education, and somebody is just coming there to put a hindrance for that child not to go to school. Arrest my case.
All right.
Thank you.
Get a motion for, close.
Second.
Got a motion from Mr. Marin, second by Mr. Marin, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And both, pleasure, counsel.
Chair, I'll take this. I move to uphold the zoning administrator's denial of special use permit application issue 119-16 because petitioners failed to demonstrate that petition, if the waiver is granted, is consistent with the applicable general standards set forth in section 27-129, see section 27-61 sub B and 27-127 sub B sub 2. In addition, based on the criteria that's laid out in our city ordinances and by the admission of the applicant themselves, they knew that there was a restriction of the distance separation for these type of facilities, but continued to go forward with this regardless, and waited for this zoning administrator to make that decision.
All right, got a motion from Mr. Suarez, second by Mr. Marin, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those both? All right, the request been denied. We go to information reports.
I don't have any information.
Mr. Marin?
Not sure.
None.
Mr. Manzkego?
Yes, sir, I have two items.
Hey, whoa, 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 whoa. You got to learn now, we still in business.
Y'all still in business.
All right.
Yes, sir, I'd like to make a motion for May 23, 2019, for a city council workshop agenda to discuss the proposed code amendments being processed as part of the January 2019 code amendment cycle.
I got a motion from Mr. Manzkego, second by Mr. Marin, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And both?
All right, and then just a clarification, I made a motion on April 11th for a plan amendment transmittal public hearing. You'll see it for the new, I did not set a time for that. I want to set it for 5:01 PM, and that will be for the June 27, 2019 meeting.
All right.
Second.
Got a motion from Mr. Manzkego, second by Mr. Marin, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And both? Okay, anything else, sir?
Nope. Happy Easter.
You got any eggs?
No.
Mr. Corn?
No, thank you, sir.
Mr. Suarez?
Nothing other than happy Easter. Enjoy your Sunday.
Receiving file motion, receiving file.
Second.